Call our meeting to order. Welcome all to the Monday, May 16, 2016, Meeting of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen, and I'll invite you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the three flag before which it stands, one nation, under God, indivi- with liberty and justice for all.
First item of business is a proclamation for Eagle Scout Cameron J. Smith. Mr. Patterson, if you would do the honors?
It'd be a pleasure. Cameron and I go back a few years. We've done a lot of activities together, so it truly is a pleasure for me to present this proclamation. Whereas Cameron J. Smith, a Boy Scout Troop Forty, was successfully, has successfully completed the qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting, and Cameron Smith met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and Falmouth. Whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for a special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who have completed this rank, and Cameron J. Smith, now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privileges, is now an Eagle Scout. Now therefore, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, May 21, 2016, as Cameron J. Smith Day. And we have signed our names below. So Cameron, I do want to say, I do want to point out for everybody's benefit that Eagle Scouts have to do a major project that usually amounts to 50 to 100 hours of work. And in Cameron's case, he reached out to Brenda Swain of the Service Committee, of the Falmouth Service Center, and she asked him to build, let's see, four mobile shelving units and two permanent closet units, so that they would be able to better store and organize their donated clothing items and be in a better position to distribute them to the families that actually need them. So Cameron, thanks for your contribution to this community through that effort, and congratulations.
So that was the motion?
Thank you very much.
That's the motion. So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, none. Congratulations.
Congratulations. And also, I just wanted to take a moment, I just wanted to acknowledge Selectman Patterson for all of his assistance over the years with all the kids in Troop Forty. The adult leaders helped to get the scouts, you know, to obtain their Eagle rank. It's a very long process. The kids enjoy it immensely, but if it wasn't for leaders such as Sam, we wouldn't be able to have such a, you know, a unique situation in Troop Forty, but we have quite a few scouts that, you know, continue to work and obtain that Eagle rank. And I really did want to acknowledge Sam's participation, because if it wasn't for Sam and all the other adult leaders, then, you know, my son Cameron wouldn't have had such great opportunities over the course of this time in the troop. So thank you, Sam.
Well, let me say, it was not an effort. It was a true pleasure on my part. I've enjoyed all the activities that I've been involved in with these young men. They're sort of my surrogate grandsons, I guess is the way to describe them, anyway.
Congratulations for all that work. Next item is announcements. The first announcement is to let people know that we are accepting applications for at-large member for the Senior Center Building Subcommittee. These applications are due no later than this Friday, May 20, 2016, by 4:00, and we hope to have the interviews next Monday, May 23. Any other announcements?
Is it Face Day Bike Week? I believe it is.
It is. Yep.
Yes, I wanted to announce that I attended the hearing last Friday on the complaint against Ralph Herbst, who is a candidate for Selectman, that claiming that he was not a resident of the Town of Falmouth. The Board of Registars held a hearing along with Town Council. Frank Duffy was present, and Mr. Herbst had his own attorney there. And the decision of the Board of Registars is unanimous, that he is a resident of the Town of Falmouth and is eligible to be elected tomorrow.
To add to that announcement, I want to remind people that tomorrow is Election Day. Polls open at 7:00, and they close at 8:00. And it is a local election, and we request that you all get out there and vote. It really matters that we get your input. We also have a ballot question on the ballot tomorrow, on the Historic Commission, so we'd like to make sure we get input on that also. Next item is public comment, and if there's anyone who'd like to make a comment on something that's not our agenda, and I'd ask that we hold, we have some special public comments first. Is there anything of our typical public comments that people want to start with? Mr. Putnam?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brent Putnam. I'm the President of the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association, and I'm here to announce that the National Weather Service, with the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association, is sponsoring a severe weather spotter training session. This is part of their SkyWarn program. This will be here in Falmouth. It's a free two-and-a-half-hour class. It will be on Saturday, June 4, at 10:00 a.m. at the Herman Meeting Room in the Falmouth Public Library. The SkyWarn is a volunteer program that was started in the '70s. There were nearly 290,000 trained severe weather spotters across the country, and these volunteers help keep their local communities safe by providing reports of severe weather and enable the National Weather Service to issue more timely and accurate warnings for tornadoes, severe thunderstorms, and flash floods. This session is open to the public at no charge, and anyone aged 16 or older with an interest in public service is interested, is encouraged to attend. SkyWarn volunteers include concerned private citizens, ham radio operators, police and fire personnel, public utility workers, and other individuals who have responsibility for protecting others. Again, it's a free training session for SkyWarn. This is Saturday, June 4, 2016, 10:00 a.m. to approximately 12:30 at the Herman Meeting Room in the Falmouth Public Library. If you have any questions, you can reach out to the Falmouth Amateur Radio Association. Our webpage is F-A-L-A-R-A, FAL-A-R-A.org. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Leonard Johnson. I live in North Falmouth, and I hate to put a damper on the proceedings in such a festive night. However, I have become increasingly concerned about the very large amount of trash on Route 28. I don't know if you all have been up there lately, but I come into town for five days a week when I'm not on my bike, and it's gotten worse and worse and worse. If you've come to start maybe at Thomas Landers Road and come on down, come in where four lanes become two lanes, and it's just awful. And it's the first impression that a great many people have coming into town, and we really need to do something about it. The standard response to the DPW is that it's a state highway and the Town of Falmouth can't touch it. But we need to do something about it. Up in Bourne on the MacArthur Boulevard, there's been an outfit called DBI Services that's been cleaning trash up there, and in fact, they were actually on the north lane, where the 28 becomes four lanes. They were on the north lane on the east side about two weeks ago and cleaned up a lot of trash. But there's still a huge amount there, and we need to find a creative way to deal with this, because it's important. I would think that people in the tourist business here in town would be very upset about it. And on a couple of occasions, my wife and I have been out there picking up trash. The only time we feel safe is very early on Sunday morning, but I don't think the town really wants a bunch of 75-year-olds out there picking up trash. So I hope you can do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I guess Flynn did raise the same issue last week, but thank you for the reminder that we keep on looking to come up with a solution. Anyone else have a comment? Okay. Now, we have, people are ready for some special time for some special public comments.
Oh, look who's here! The whole delegation!
We are, we're here tonight to mark the milestone of a Selectman who, as I always say, tonight brings full circle, who signed my Eagle Scout proclamation. I know you just did one earlier, but Pat was a brand-new Selectwoman, her first year in office, and celebrated with us out in the back here when I got my Eagle Scout Award, and over the years has been active in a number of issues, not only in the municipal level but in the county level. And so tonight, Pat, as this being your last Selectments meeting, we didn't have the election tomorrow to try to fill your high heels, but we wanted to come and recognize your work for this community, your tireless efforts on the behalf of all of the citizens. I come from East Falmouth, Pat. We know you come from North Falmouth nowadays, but we have a common stomping ground down in Washington, D.C. I went to college just down the street from where Pat grew up and went to school, and so we've always had that connection back to Washington, D.C. But in Falmouth, regardless of what side of town, we've always been there for the folks. And Pat, thank you so much for the many years of service to Falmouth. And also tonight, to recognize Rebecca Moffett, who rose through the ranks of the Falmouth School Committee. I still remember that the day you came up as Chairman to Boston right after I was elected, and we had a great lunch during the School Committee Association and sort of laid out some of the priorities that you had as Chair of the School Committee at the time, and carried many of those agenda items forward here to the Board of Selectmen. And so we want to recognize you as well for your service, both on the School Committee side and on the municipal side. And Tim came all the way in from Nantucket.
On the slow boat.
Time, time is right.
You know, I was debating whether I'd risk it, and luckily I didn't risk it. So I got on the slow boat, because none of our fast boats are running because of the weather, but I didn't want to miss this evening. Rebecca, you know, I joked with you before, being on the School Committee was a thankless job. It's one of those ones where half the people love you, other half not so much. And then when you decided to run for Selectwoman, I thought, wow, this woman's really brave and clueless. I was completely, I was completely wrong about the clueless part, but you really are brave. You did a terrific job on the School Committee. I enjoyed meeting with you so many times. You always asked one of the same questions that I always had the answer you didn't want to hear, but it was, at least you stuck to your position and I stuck to mine. But you've been terrific for this town, and I appreciate everything you've done, and you are going to be missed. I think it's kind of interesting when, at least the towns that I've served, it's getting more, you know, a few more women running for boards, but not very many, and to see a board that the majority of the people are women is really a rarity. But I think it's, you couldn't ask for a stronger woman board, and these gentlemen know how to keep, how to keep up with you, and that's great. Mary Pat, you know, we've known each other a long time. We actually got to know each other when we were a little bit on a different side of an issue, but I felt we've always had a great deal of respect for each other. And since that, years ago, when we were dealing with some seamship authority issues, I consider you one of the closest friends I have in Falmouth. You've been a terrific mentor for me. Almost everything you do, I follow your lead. You know, you decided not to run, I decided not to run.
That's the other way around.
But with that, you know, I did just a couple of quick things, and you know, we take a lot of this for granted, and I apologize. I turn my back every time I'm in this room, but I think you're supposed to. That way the camera doesn't get in the back of your head. But we're talking to everyone in the room. You know, Falmouth is so fortunate to have someone like you and others here, but so many people give. But you know, I did just some quick calculations, so forgive my math, you know, the mathematicians in the room. But with that, you know, you have 25,000-plus days of service to Falmouth. You've got 52, 5,200 weeks of service to Falmouth. That comes up to a total of over 100 years of service. You have received from Falmouth close to 120,000 votes over the years. I won't say every time, because there were a few dates that I couldn't find, but most often you've been the leading vote getter. You know, I'm the type of person, when I get elected the first time, they like me. You know, then the votes start trailing off. But you're, the opposite's true with you. You know, each time you've been up for election, the vote total has just gone up and up and up. And that is, you know, that's, that's very difficult to do, and it just speaks very highly of what you've done. And I'm just, I'm delighted to be here tonight. I hope you enjoy being able to spend many more hours with the County Commission, and but at least you won't be here on Monday night, so it'll give you an opportunity to really hone in on some of that stuff at the county, which I'm sure you're looking forward to. I'm saying that just in jest, but I do believe you've been a wonderful County Commissioner as well, and Falmouth has benefited from that. But once again, this is a terrific board. You work well together. You've got wonderful candidates coming up, and I look forward to seeing the progress that the board makes in the future, but they definitely have big shoes to fill, and as David said, they're high heels to step into. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lance from Senator DiMascino's office, and I will say this, Vinnie was very upset that he couldn't be here. He was really hoping to be there, because he talked to me passionately about going back to the days in Plymouth with you. So I'm sure he would have loved to have been here. Like I said, he just, you know, he was, I'm sure he's crushed that he can't be here, but Vinnie echoes everything that Dave and I've said, but I know that Lance kind of gone with that.
Yeah, unfortunately, he had to get, he was stuck in Boston in a ways in the interim, so he couldn't be here. But, you know, speaking for the representatives, we give out a lot of citations, but it's a special privilege when we've had the opportunity to work closely with folks like you. So on behalf of the Senate, on behalf of the House, we have some citations for you. We'd like to just read those and give them to you. On behalf of Senator DiMascino, thank you for all that you've done for the Town of Falmouth and for our community. So we appreciate everything you've done. Go ahead. Give them to him together? Yep. And this just says, "Let it be known that the Massachusetts Senate, here by the extension, takes congratulations to Mary Pat Flynn, Rebecca Moffett, for your outstanding commitment to the residents of Falmouth throughout the many years of dedicated service as member of the Falmouth Board of Selectmen. It's be further known that Massachusetts Senate extends best wishes for continued success." And the citations will be signed with the President of the Senate, the test in two of the coffee here transmitted by the clerk in the Senate, and signed by the President of the Senate, Stan Rosenberg, by William Wallace, the clerk, and by Senator DiMascino on 5/16/2016. Congratulations.
We won't go through all the reading. Ours, ours are very similar to what the Senate are, just a touch nicer. So with that, what, the crux of the matter for yours, Mary Pat Flynn, is for your recognition of your dedicate, decades of hard work and dedication to the Town of Falmouth. You have been a mentor and a friend to so many, your presence on the board will be missed. And Rebecca, your commitment to the Town of Falmouth, Board of Selectmen, and serving as Chair of the School Committee, thank you for your service to our community. Thank you both very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. I was going to slip quietly away. Congratulations.
We'll see you.
I sure will. Thank you.
Just in closing, I know you have some vote ramp issues coming up. We have reached out to Heather. She reached out a couple of times. The delegation has spoken about this, and we're more than willing to help in any way we can, so hopefully tonight's presentation goes well, but know that we're willing to go the next step if we need to. So we'll see how, what happens tonight, but we've let the state know that we're willing to and really want to see this done.
We really appreciate that.
So once again, yeah, anything we can do, just let us know.
Could I just say one thing?
Absolutely.
First of all, we can never do this without you, and I hope you know that, that our relationship with our state senator and state reps is just so important to getting the work done. And secondly, I thought I could just slip away quietly. I thank you very much.
Well, no, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to approve the minutes, May 9, 2016, Public and Executive Session.
I would like to add just a little additional public comment, and there are a couple of other people who would like to add just a little additional public comment, even though we've had the official state public comment. Becky and Pat, both of you, thank you so much for all your service and all your years of working for this community, and we truly appreciate it. I know we haven't always agreed. That's one of the things that I will miss so much about both of you, is how well you will work with people you don't agree with necessarily. There are a few people who came tonight especially for this. There are a few people who couldn't be here, who send their regrets. Carrie is off celebrating his wedding anniversary. Troy is at his Selectments meeting. Andy might be here, but he isn't. Julia Taylor sends kisses. Thelma sends hugs. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Matt Patrick, former Selectman and former State Representative, and I'm here to just recognize Pat. Becky, I never served with you, but I want to recognize Pat for all the stuff that we did together, and there were some pretty harrowing times during those years, from 1995 through 2001, when we found out one of our wells was polluted, coming from pollution from the basin. It was, it was really tough time. We didn't know exactly what to do, but I'm here to tell you that between Pat and Virginia and Eddie Marks and Troy, we managed to pull it together. We went out and got financing in advance of the money we would get from the military, because we knew they would be obligated to pay for it. But those were the days, and I'm here to attest to Pat's leadership and pragmatism and just general goodwill and niceness that kept us all from tearing each other apart. But thanks very much, Pat, for all your years. Thanks for being a great example for me. And Rebecca, you've been a tremendous Selectwoman too, and I'm honored to be here to say thank you to both of you.
Thank you.
I'm Virginia Valiala, Precinct 5, and I just wanted to thank you both for your service and how you have juggled your family and your issues with the town and the time you have spent on studying the issues and working with the town. Pat, I wanted to say in particular that I was on the board with you for many years, and there were so many issues to deal with, Matt referred to the pollution, that another really important thing was high field, and you sort of took that on and carried that ball and kept tracking it, and by sort of each of us working in different areas, we were able to accomplish a great deal as a board. Both of you collaborate, and I just think that is one of the best attributes that a Selectman could have, and I thank you again for all your service.
Thank you. Could I make one comment about Virginia? Virginia, if you remember, the very first Selectments meeting in 1993, the first item our agenda was a smoking ban in Falmouth.
Yes.
So I will never forget that.
Tough issues, but fair and forth.
Susan Shepard, Precinct 1, I'm just going to quickly say, we're not losing either one of these ladies. Becky is one of the most tireless volunteers that Neighborhood Falmouth has, and now she can do it on Monday nights, too. And Pat is leaving the board, but she's running again for County Commissioner, and you know she's doing something right, because she got attacked in the paper today by Ron Beatty.
Kevin Murphy, Precinct 5, and I'd like to address both you women directly. I had the honor and privilege to serve with you on the Board of Selectmen. We didn't always agree, but we always worked through the issues as we moved forward, and we made Falmouth a better place because of it. I really appreciate the commitment that you both have made to this board. Most folks out there don't understand the number of hours it takes for each and every one of you to serve on the Board of Selectmen, and the scrutiny that you may come under. You can't go buy a gallon of milk without having to talk and explain why you made a particular vote on a particular item. As a matter of fact, there were many nights, even myself, I'd go home, my wife would ask me, why'd you do that? But I want to say that both of you have been tireless in your jobs, and the Town of Falmouth deserves to give you, you know, a thank you. Instead of grabbing you when you grab a gallon of milk at a store, I hope they all say thank you very much for your service. And on behalf of myself and everyone I know, I want to thank you both. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ron Swig, Precinct 1, yes, I do want to definitely thank you very much, as all residents in town I'm sure do, but also look at, in looking at Pat, especially at this point, you've done this once before, you've left the board, and we look forward to the two of you possibly, and hopefully, maybe returning to the board because of your contributions. So we're looking back, but we can look forward. We'll give you three years to think about, however long you need to think about it, or whatever year, anyway. So anyway, it'd be great to, we'll see you in other things, but thanks so much. Thank you.
That was something. That was very nice. Very nice.
Well deserved, too.
So on to the minutes, May 9, 2016.
I don't think we have minutes.
Actually, they're not in our packets. I think that was postponed.
Yeah.
Next item, to affirm the appointment of our returning wastewater superintendent. Mr. Suso?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my great pleasure and privilege to request of the board that you consider affirming my appointment of Amy Lowell as our wastewater superintendent. As Doug has mentioned, Amy had been superintendent of wastewater one, at an earlier point in her career, from about 2003 to 2007, from 2007 to 2015. Just toward the end of last year, Amy served as the Assistant Wastewater Superintendent and has been the acting superintendent since January of this year. And Amy is the best candidate from a field of several qualified individuals who applied for the position and were considered in the search, and I'm delighted to recommend Amy's appointment to this position, which she held with distinction many years ago, and with your concurrence will be holding once again. We look forward to working with her. And Amy is, of course, with us this evening, as are others in public works. And Amy, perhaps you'd care to make a few comments, or the board may have some as well.
I had not prepared any comments. Amy Lowell, Acting Wastewater Superintendent at the moment. I appreciate the opportunity. I've enjoyed working for the town since 2003, and I appreciate the offer that has been extended, or the proposal that has been extended. Thank you very much.
Ms. Ren.
I'd just like to ask if whether you appreciate the extended interview challenge we gave you in terms of rerouting the entire town and being able to see various ways of, you know, comings and goings and the consistent questions that folks in town have asked, the maps that you've drawn up every week, and of course, I'm really complimenting you on the trial by fire success that you've had, which has duly afforded you the appointment of this position. So thank you for all your efforts.
Mr. Patterson?
I move that we endorse the Town Manager's appointment of Amy Lowell to the position of Wastewater Superintendent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. I think I see a hand in the back.
Mr. Chairman?
I just want to say that it's really a little bit special when you do it the second time, as though the first time wasn't enough to show her perseverance. So it's kind of like getting married and then renewing your vows. So even, even now, when we talk about the desire to want to make a difference and the commitment that many of the public employees we have have, with Amy
Even now, when we talk about the desire to want to make a difference and the commitment that many of the public employees we have have, with Amy in particular, I don't think anybody out there would want to take this job right now. She's been part and parcel of the whole thing, the whole time, so it's a very, very smooth transition, but Amy has always done a tremendous job for the town and very, very dedicated, and I'm glad to see that for the years that she's already put in that she's going to be with us for many more, so, thank you.
I do have one question from Lowell. If you wouldn't mind just telling us where we stand with Robert Hour and Route twenty-eight?
I'd be glad to. That's a, that's a great question, because Robert Hour is done in Route twenty-eight. They, they finished up last week, and they will, they have no more work to do in Route twenty-eight for the sewer project other than final paving, which will be done in the fall. As you know, the Mass DOT intersection projects are still operating in Route twenty-eight, which when we were both out there, it was hard to tell who was who, but the remaining work in Route twenty-eight is theirs. We're still working, Robert Hour is still working in the Maravista Peninsula, and we'll be there for the next number of months.
It was quite reassuring, because the schedule was Memorial Day to be done on Route twenty-eight with Robert Hour.
Yeah, they were ahead of schedule, I don't, they were, there were as many as three crews at a time out in Route twenty-eight, gravity sewer going one way, forced main the other way, and a, and lateral installations behind them, so they did push to get done as quickly as they could.
Great, thank you very much, and congratulations on the appointment.
Thanks very much, I appreciate it.
The next item is under Summary Actions and Licenses. We have an application for the change of manager of the wine and malt package store license, the Ocean State Job Lot, fifty T-ticket highway. We do have a statement from the police that they have done a core check, and they have no issue with this change of manager.
I'm going to move a pro.
Second.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Closed. None, the ayes have it. Okay, next, under Administrative Orders, is some discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. We do have a public hearing scheduled for seven thirty, so the rest of our Summary Actions items, we do need to postpone until after the hearings. We do have four different hearings, one every ten minutes or so. So first we'll start with is the shade tree hearing. Notice hereby given of a public hearing to be held by the Southwater Selectmen, Selectmen's Meeting Room, Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven thirty PM, on the application of the town engineer for the removal of some six-inch to twenty-inch DBH trees of various types at the following location, on Old Barnstable Road, from the Cranway Boggs to Carriage Shop Road, plus or minus six thousand feet. Removals requested for the construction of a new five-foot-wide bituminous asphalt sidewalk with granite curbing for a length of six thousand feet from the Cranway Boggs to Carriage Shop Road. Old Barnstable Road is a long and winding roadway with four street lighting. This proposed sidewalk creates a safe and clear continuous multimodal path for access along the eastern edge of roadway from Route twenty-eight to Carriage Shop Road. Mr. McConity? And this was posted in the newspaper on Friday, May sixth. Mr. McConity?
Good evening, Peter McConity, Deputy Director of Public Works. This is a project that's been going on for several years with Old Barnstable Road. Our intention was to go from Route twenty-eight all the way up to the Mashpee Town Line. We staggered, we broke it up into four different sections, and we staggered each section. The first year we did between Carriage Shop Road and Hayway Road, the second year we did Hayway Road to the Mashpee Line. Last year we did Route twenty-eight to the Boggs, and this year we're looking at doing from the Boggs to Carriage Shop, and then that'll basically be a completed roadway. What this will do is this will make a connectivity from Route twenty-eight, T-ticket highway, or East Falmouth Highway, all the way up to Carriage Shop Road, you'll be able to have a sidewalk. Last year's project, had we put a sidewalk in all the way up to the Boggs, across the Boggs, and then if this is voted in and is successful, it'll go, put a sidewalk in from the Boggs all the way up to Carriage Shop. So, over the past several weeks, been working with the POC's Superintendent Rocky Gomes on these trees, we went out and located the trees, I walked the road with both the POC Superintendent Rocky and Highway Superintendent Jim Grady. We walked the road, we marked the trees, Highway Superintendent went out and he's, he's been in touch with most of the homeowners where these trees fall into, and they, they've been, they, they agree with the trees, they agree with the project. We haven't had any, we haven't had any comments in, in that regard from any of the, from any of the abuddies. So what we did last week is we went out and we put in these notice of public hearing signs, they get nailed onto all the trees, so we're looking for thirty-one trees, and various, various diameters, breast height. So the section of roadway is kind of hard to see, and this is a Google map. The section of roadway is from the Boggs all the way up to Carriage Shop Road, six thousand feet. The proposed sidewalk that we're looking at installing, it will have granite curbing, and it'll be five foot wide. It's going to go, we're looking at, it's going to go on the east side of the roadway. We're requesting to move the thirty-one trees varying, and varying sizes and diameter. We will be working, we have been working with the POC Superintendent, we will work on the POC, with the POC Superintendent through this whole process. We've done this in the past on other sections of the roadway and on other roadways in town. What we're looking at doing is a proposed planting plan that's going to basically encompass that whole section of that roadway, so the, the trees that we'll be removing, we'll be replacing, and I will be working with Rocky for his expertise in the types of trees and the size of trees. The new sidewalk, it will provide an access from Route twenty-eight to Carriage Shop Road, and we are also looking at improvements being performed at the golf courses. They're minor improvements, but there's a, as everyone that's driven, been out to Old Barnstable Road, they cross us where the, the golf course is. So what I was able to do is I just went on Google Maps and I took a whole bunch of snapshots going from the roadway. So this is basically at Old Barnstable Road, at the Boggs, looking up. You can see on the east side that there is a lot of tree growth up there, the grass, the road is way, the road width, the roadway width in that area is only twenty, twenty-one feet wide, so it's a tight road as it is, and the, the place, the, the roadway gets a lot of bikers, gets a lot of pedestrians, and I believe with this, with the sidewalk, it's going to be able to bring more pedestrians, more bikers, especially with the golf course being accessible at the end. And this is a, the street tees, it's just, street trees just south of Crocker Road. You can see Crocker Road up there in the distance. And turning back, this is a, this is a, a, a street view looking at Crocker Road. Actually, these trees right here, these trees right here are the trees that we're looking at, they're small cedar trees, there's three or four of them there. Those are roughly about four inches to six inches in diameter. That's Crocker Road at the intersection. There is an existing sidewalk there right now, it has a bituminous berm. What happens with the bituminous berms is when they go in, they don't really go in, they go in fully functional, what happens is they go in, but they get hill line cracks down them. You don't notice them, but after a couple of years of winters and the plows and the vehicles bouncing off them, they just, they start to break apart, so it meets the reveal access, but the bituminous berms, they, they don't hold up, and we, we're always out there at Public Works fixing the, fixing them and patching them back up. So there's another street view at Old Wacoit Road. As you can see, it's pretty tight in that corner over there, but this is, would be taken at five feet in, all the way up the roadway. There's a lot, you can see there's a lot of overgrowth here, a lot of the trees would need to be coming up and doing some uplifting and some trimming. Here's a street view of Mill Farm Way, there's a bus stop right at this corner of Mill Farm Way, the bus comes in, stops right there. This is a street view with Fairway Meadows, a little hard to see, but there's, there's someone standing in the front yard with their dogs there. As you can see, it's, it's pretty tight in that area, it's only, it ranges about twenty-one, twenty-two feet. We're going to try to get a little bit more width out of the roadway when we mill and overlay it. Last fall, the drainage has already been put in, we put in over sixty structures, sixty-five structures in the roadway, so it's fully underway, ready for, for this next phase. This is the street view with the golf course, and as you can see right here, this is the crosswalk to get over to the golf course. What we're looking at doing is we're going to emphasize that a little more, we're going to put in a, a brighter crosswalk, and we also had some conversations about putting in, I think you've seen them on Sippewissett Road, the flashing signs there, the same basically that's at Locust Street in front of Town Council's office. We're also looking at, this is a very shallow, very low rail fence, we're looking at replacing the rail fence on both sides of the street with a two-rail post, posting rail fence, so there'll be some pretty good improvements. As we know, there's some other work that's going to, going to be going on over there over the fall timeframe, so the timeframe matches up. These are some more of the trees, all these trees actually, they're right in front of this, this house here, just south of Eagle Drive. All these trees, a lot of them are all bunched up trees, they're all three or four trees together, they range from another, in this area, another, from three to six inches in this area. Some of the larger ones, where there were some larger ones down the street. And coming down the corner, going down to Old Barnstable Road, this is an evergreen, it's, it's a fairly large evergreen. I forget the size, maybe Rocky knows, it's a pretty large evergreen, I think it was eighteen inch or something, a little higher than that, so that's a pretty good sized tree, it's set back. There's a bank up in this area, so we'd be cutting into the bank, and we cut into the bank, we'd be looking at, looking at the tree, the roots of the tree.
Peter, excuse me? When you say looking at the roots of the tree, do you mean you're going to save it or not?
No, this would be one of the trees that we're looking at removing.
Okay.
Yeah, I think actually Rocky can confirm, this is the largest tree I think that we're looking at. Most of them were the four to six, we had a few of the twelves. Some of them are in areas where no houses were there in front.
Can I ask another question while you're talking about remove? It looks like a couple of the poles, utility poles, are actually within that five-foot width, are you going to go around those, or are you going to have to remove any poles, or have EverSource move any of those poles?
Yeah, we've, actually, that pole right there, we're able, the, the one at the end, they were going to be able to go around that and match, go around the corner and match right into the granite curbing. For the most of the length of this roadway, the poles are on the west side of the street, they're not on the east side of the street, a few areas they are, we're going to be able to go behind them. It's not that EverSource won't do it, being this roadway, we've worked with them in the past, but we don't have the same time schedules. We usually go in, what we've done in the past is we'll put them in, and then they come in and they relocate their poles, and that, their process usually takes a couple of years, but in this area, we wouldn't be able, we wouldn't have to be able to do it. We're pushing the road over just enough, try to stay a few feet off the, the utility poles, and it'll be able to get a sidewalk in. And once again, this is just the, the first overview photo, showing what we're going to be asking. I don't know if there's any questions of?
Any questions to the board?
I think my first question, is there anything wrong with the trees? I mean, are they, they're not healthy, or is it because we need a sidewalk that we have to get rid of trees?
Yeah, basically, in this project, it's, it's the, we're looking at the sidewalk. What happens is, is it's not that the health of the trees, we're looking at putting the sidewalk in. On this section of roadway, it is somewhat windy, but there's a lot of trees in the area, and there's not a lot of street lights, so it gets, at nighttime, it's, it's pretty dark in that area.
Have people requested a sidewalk on the different roads that you're talking about? What is the purpose in putting a sidewalk in all this area that you're doing?
Well, we're trying, what we're trying to do is just make connectivity from, it's for Old Barnstable Road, it's what's one of the main corridor from, from Falmouth through Barnstable, so we're just trying to make it a connectivity from Route twenty-eight up to as far as we can go, up through Carriage Shop Road, and in the future, we might continue that to another area and just keep on doing sections of sidewalk.
Do you find that once you have taken down the trees to put in sidewalks, people are walking more? I mean, I'm trying to get the purpose, because you're not going between commercial, you know, if there was too commercial and people wanted to walk and they were in the street.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to think why all these trees are coming down to put the sidewalk in, and the purpose of the sidewalk is?
Just connectivity and for the, the multimodal connectivity.
Okay.
I, I would compare this pretty much, the, the last project we did, that was somewhat, we put sidewalks in a lot of different areas, but the last one similar to this was Trotting Park Road. The sidewalk we did went from McDonald's up about a thousand feet, and it was narrow when it stopped, it just stopped dead-ended, it didn't go anywhere. So what we did is we took that and we pushed it all the way through to Brick Hill Road, and that was another roadway that was about, an extension of about six, seven thousand feet.
I cut through on that frequently, and I, I don't see very many people walking on it, I know the connection to the commercial on Route twenty-eight, I understand that.
Yeah.
I didn't understand that one either, but.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think sometimes in taking so many trees down is a personality of a town, and I think when it just goes with sidewalks, I think it changes the personality.
With that said, I mean, I, I think Rocky would be able to answer more to the trees or the health of the trees, but we did walk it last week, and we did, for the most part of it, it is for the sidewalk, it's not really for the health of the trees.
Well, then I just wondered, what's the purpose of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Okay.
Could Rocky at least comment on what sort of planting plan we have to replace? Is the numbers thirty-one they're replacing, or ten, or?
Well, hi, Rocky Gomes, POC Superintendent, Tree Ward, I did review this project with Peter, and yeah, there are, I believe, forty trees to be, or thirty-one trees to be removed. He did agree to plant in kind, so every one that would come out, we will replace with another tree, with a four to six inch diameter, usually, you know, when this is done, we usually go in and plant a one and a half inch tree, but in this case, because of the numbers, they did agree to, to, to a four to six inch diameter, and, you know, we, we will oversee it, we're, we're actually going to do all the plantings in the fall, so.
Okay.
I mean, it does, you know, certainly pain me to see the trees go, but, you know, we, you know, we're actually right up against the property lines, so we can't move the sidewalk around the trees, we, you know, we did look at everything, and I know in places we've done that before, but in this case, we just can't do it, there's just no room.
Well, I know one of the goals that you have and that we have had too as the board is to make the town more walkable, and having the sidewalks there will do that. So I'm trying to place in my mind where they are, I, I drive Old Barnstable Road a lot, and so what will be the walkable connections for people in the neighborhood?
Well, so last year, we did from twenty-eight to the Boggs, and my understanding is I don't see the Boggs a lot in the winter times, but I guess it's like an ice skating rink down there, people skate and they, they go down there and they use the Boggs. But this will take them actually to Carriage Shop Road, so they'll be able to, it'll be six thousand feet plus that, it's got to be two thousand feet anyway, so it's almost eight thousand feet of sidewalk, it'll take them up through the golf, golf course area, the school, the school drop-off areas, the school pickup areas in that area where the bus, where the buses pick up and drop off. And it'll be just connectivity through all the roadways, there's a lot of side roads that connect off, a lot of residential side roads that connect off that main, the main Old Barnstable track, so.
Well, as Selectman Moran mentioned, this is actually Bicycle Week, we're about to start into Bicycle Week, and I have to say that one of the, kind of the priorities of the Bicycle Committee is to try to get some east-west corridors, and that road is narrow, and for bicyclists, especially anybody that's trying to bike on it in dusk or near, when it's darker, it is narrow, and I've driven it many times myself, and at least this gives you a, a corridor to ride on, and you just have to obviously give the right of way to pedestrians, but I, I think it's a positive thing, and then it does provide an alternative route that kind of parallels Route twenty-eight, which of course is a rather busy highway with all kinds of traffic, so I see this as at least a potential alternative, and I know I, speaking of scouts, I've taken scouts on bicycle hikes that use Bar, Old Barnstable Road and what have you, and, and parts of the section that you're talking about, and this would help a lot.
The roadway's in deterioration, so we have to do the roadway, we did all the drainage on it, and that's why we say we can do that. We've had the sidewalk planned on there for several years, and we just came to this section, so now, now we're going to be starting to work on this section, so. It is a heavily traveled for bicycles, I do know that, because you see, you see them, we have the, matter of fact, the Bike Ways Committee asked, asked to put in, they wanted to put charros on this road a couple of years back when we first did it, the other section of it, but the road's, it's just too narrow, so we just say, take the edge of the road. But we did put additional share the road signs on this, and takes you right up through Mashpee. Kind of that connectivity takes you up to Mashpee, and it takes you from Mashpee down through Davis, you can get down to Davisville Road and then get all the way down to the beach, so.
I just have one other comment. Sort of part of the legacy of some of the people who were on this board in the nineties was the road program that was voted, and part of the road program was any time a road was to be approved, we should aim to have a sidewalk with that road. I know Jones Road was one of the first ones back in the mid-nineties that that was done. So I, I just, and I remember Wild Harbor Road was done not too long ago, and some of them are so-called asphalt meandering paths, but they're still walkable spaces for people who, who want to walk the roads.
Yeah.
So I think it's important to keep that in mind, and I know you have as a DPW, kept in mind the idea, or the, or the, what the board had said many years ago was that when you, when you are improving- that, when you, when you are improving major, major improvements to roads, that please consider sidewalks.
Yeah, I know, I know, well, we're trying to, we're trying to start following that state, you know, connectivity, um, complete streets, and when we, we fit it in, we can fit it in. Um, I know when the state comes in and they do, uh, intersection work or roadway works, they want sidewalks both sides, we're just looking at, uh, onto one side, and you can keep the people over to the east of the east to west, but we're trying to follow that plan, so...
We have questions? Mr. Chairman?
Uh, to Selectman Moffett's question about the need for the sidewalk and the connectivity. Overall, when you think about a sidewalk, the primary purpose is public safety. Uh, it provides a safe access for children, families, ADA access, um, so we're putting a lot of money in the Old Barnstable Road, and the end product without a sidewalk would be zero accessibility. Uh, the road is not well-lit, it is heavily traveled, it is narrow, and it is dangerous, um, and it is all residential. So, the point being that what we're doing here, even with the connectivity, uh, the primary purpose is public safety and ADA accessibility, and I think that you're gonna see that going forward on a lot of the needs for the sidewalks, wherever they may be. Um, when you look around at those who are either in wheelchairs, or sightseeing dogs, or blind with a cane, uh, any and all of the above, wherever there is no sidewalk, there is no safe place for them, and we have a long way to go, uh, in order to achieve that, so I just wanted to throw that out there, and in this particular case, we will be replanting all the trees that are coming down, so, thank you.
This is a public hearing, does anyone would like to speak in favor of this project? Just Ryan?
Uh, hi. Since I'm here, Ron Swine, precinct one again. Um, I was just thinking, as we think about this, I think it's a good idea to help with this, with, with walkways and ways of going, but I think that as we go ahead, that it'd be good to be sure to coordinate, like, with the BikeWays Committee, and think about the bikeway aspect as well, because there can be a joint, uh, factor, I mean, bikeways and walk, and sidewalks don't always get it wrong too well, but there could be a parallel thing, but to at least bring that into the discussion as we look at making Falmouth more bike, bike friendly. Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to speak in favor, anyone would like to speak in opposition to the shade hearing? Remove the trees?
I think the, uh, what really has settled my question is the fact that they're going to plant more trees after they cut these down, and that wasn't said originally. So what I could see is a road and a lot of cement, and I would protect the trees, so if they're going to plant them, then I'm fine with that.
They will be smaller.
Well, they start out that way.
There's some sixteen inch diameters that are linked with four to six, and we just have to be aware that is true. All right, motion to close the hearing?
So move second.
Motion, second, close the hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done, and now what's our action?
I would move to approve, uh, the plan, second.
Okay, motion, second, approve the plan that's presented, remove these trees, the proposed sidewalk installation, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. How do you guys have it?
Excellent presentation.
Thank you. Our next hearing, this is a wetlands hearing for Carl Gravina and Joanne Perry. Public hearing notice, the Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven forty PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of Carl Gravina and Joanne Perry to construct a fixed pier that will extend twenty feet to mean high water and located at forty-five Madeline Road, East Falmouth, area affected East Eel Pond. Interested parties may review the Falmouth hearing at the Selectmen's Office. Publication dates were Friday, May sixteen, May sixth, and Friday, May thirteenth. Mr. Borselli?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, my name's Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, uh, Carl Gravina. This is the last doc I get to present to... Yeah, is that true?
Yes, my last doc here, I have this afterward after this.
Oh, there's one more, I think, I think this, it's my last doc.
Your last doc here, how's that?
I think you have one more, after me.
Your last.
Anyway, this is a relatively simple one, so hopefully it's not, uh, controversial. This property is at number forty-five Madeline Road. Uh, Mr. Gravina acquired the property from, through, um, inheritance from his, uh, parents, and there's been a small dock there for, uh, decades, and it was discovered that it didn't have, uh, any licensing through, uh, Massachusetts DEP, so he contacted us to, uh, pursue licensing it properly, and we discovered that, um, it didn't meet any of the standards that DEP expects, and it didn't meet any of the standards that Conservation Commission or this board would expect for docks. So, uh, it's currently, uh, substandard as far as its structure, it has a small, relatively narrow, unsafe ramp down to a floating dock, and, uh, it's very close to shore, uh, almost right up against the shoreline, and the wa, the water depth right at that edge is, is substandard. Um, floating docks are not the best solution as far as Conservation Commission, they shadow the bottom, at low, low tides, they bottom out, so the plan was to basically change that to entirely thick structure that meets the, uh, size requirements, uh, of the Conservation Commission regulations. It's pile-supported, it is, uh, five foot wide by twenty feet long, the boat that docks at it is approximately, uh, twenty-six feet long. We met with the harbor master because we pushed it out slightly, uh, on the order of four or five feet, just to get it a little further into deeper water, so the boat ties alongside here, and the water depth is adequate. It's elevated, so sunlight penetration allows for sunlight down to the bottom, and, um, we're putting, uh, actually putting, uh, sunlight decking that allows fifty percent sunlight penetration over the deck. So, in our opinion, the overall result is a better, uh, solution than what's there, and it'll, it will meet the standards that DEP expects. Conservation Commission voted, uh, to approve this and issued an order of conditions, and if this board approves it, we will proceed with, uh, uh, application, uh, to DEP for a Chapter ninety-one license. I, I also, uh, I failed to mention that, uh, the, the accessway will be elevated, so public access is allowed underneath the dock, currently it's, public access is, is blocked by the existing dock, it's not high enough, so it'd be a lot more difficult to, it's a lot more difficult today to traverse the shoreline. I think that sums it up, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Um, so there's no state license, this has, had it ever been approved by the town?
There's no evidence that I could find on record that it was ever approved by the town.
So to actually put it forward as a permitted existing dock would be inaccurate. This is a dock that never had a permit, and so any sort of random prorating of saying, they're replacing something we permitted, this is, in my view, this is a new dock.
This is in effect a new dock, yes, and this...
You can look at it that way, and so...
Yes.
I have questions as to, what are the other docks, you know, what is the ponderance of docks in this area? Because this, the Conservation Commission, their job is to make sure that it's fitting their regulations. For new docks, it's our job to make sure that it is in the best interest, public best interest, about adding a new dock here, about, are there more docks than we want in that area, and so that's a reason why it's a new dock, it does cover a little bit of different area for us.
If I could just point out, for the record, there, this is the very upper reach of Eel Pond, I think there's only two or three possible, uh, water depth, uh, adequate water depth properties, and I think two of those three have docks.
Okay.
So the area already has several, several docks along the waterway.
What's the percentage of moving out into the waterway, is this?
Oh, it's about, uh, it's less than five percent of an extension out. It certainly meets the, uh, it doesn't extend out beyond the, the maximum allowed under regulation, twenty-five percent, no.
Any other questions?
I, I just wanna speak to that, I, I did look at it for that exact reason, in terms of how much it protruded, and, you know, sort of the traffic in the area, and it, it seemed to me like, um, you know, it, it was minimal.
Yeah, and if I could add to that, that was a concern, that, uh, it's a requirement that we get comment from the harbor master, but we always wanna know that in the beginning, otherwise, if he has an issue with navigation, it makes no sense to proceed, so we, we did check with him in the beginning.
At the time we received our packets, uh, there wasn't any information from the shellfish warden or the harbor master. Do, do, does anybody have those?
I thought it was in our package, there was no evidence of shellfish.
No.
No evidence, uh, maybe there was one Cohog found in the entire area.
Yeah.
There's no evidence of eel grass either.
And how about the harbor master?
I didn't think the harbor master had any color.
There was a, uh, letter issued by the harbor master to conservation, it may not have gone into your file.
Oh, to conservation.
That said he had no issues, we would've never got an order of conditions without that.
Without that, I wondered that, because being a new dock, I would think the harbor master would be involved. Okay, thank you.
Does anyone would like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone would like to speak against this application?
I move that the hearing be closed? Second.
Motion, a second, to close the hearing, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done. Might make sense to first to find, to have some findings that we have about this dock, because it is a new dock.
Right.
Um, I think often, as Mr. Borselli said, this will be an improvement over what's there, but I'm not sure that's completely relevant, because what's there is not legal, and so what I'm envisioning is there, in my mind, legally is nothing, and so it's not an improvement for public access for that purpose, and so to have that as a selling point, I'm not sure is completely legitimate. I'm not saying I'm against the project, but, uh, often...
Makes sense.
If we get an improvement for public access, it is something that really matters to us, but, um, I would suggest the findings are that this is in keeping with other docks in the area, that it does not provide any navigational hazard to other boats in that area, there is no evidence that it's going to harm the marine life in that area, as the three conditions for why we might be willing to grant, uh, this application.
I would agree.
I think there, I don't know that we want to, but I mean, the fact that the Conservation Commission has gone through and, and applied a whole set of conditions, special conditions, is something we could cite as well, that restricts how this dock is being laid out and constructed.
Right, I mean, the, the special conditions are, we're, we're, I mean, we can add them saying we are concurring with the special conditions, but, uh, Conservation Commission's even more...
Well, I guess I wanted to say that that makes me feel comfortable that this particular dock configuration has been scrutinized from a conservation perspective.
I'd just like to ask the applicant, um, could you, uh, just call to our attention the shellfish report?
Um, really, we're not supposed to, then, once we've closed the hearing, uh, we do have the shellfish report in our packet, in which it does state that there was, that there was only one Cohog found.
Okay, that's fine.
It was from Stantec.
Thank you.
The jury results found, uh, that there was one Cohog in Area A and B.
Great.
One has to take a hundred and twenty-three samples. Any other discussion?
Remove approval?
Motion to approve?
Second.
A second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done, and I, to just reiterate, that is, of course, one of the conditions that have been put forward by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much.
Our next hearing is another wetlands hearing, this is from Nino and Grace Federico, one fifty-seven Shorewood Drive, East Falmouth, to reconstruct an existing dock. The Falmouth Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing under Section 240-77 Wetland Regulations of the zoning bylaws of the Town of Falmouth on Monday, May sixteenth, two thousand sixteen, at seven fifty-five PM, in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, in the application of Nino and Grace Federico to construct, reconstruct an existing dock, four foot by thirty-nine foot long, and three and a half feet by twelve foot long ramp, and six foot by sixteen foot float, and to license the same of the Falmouth Conservation Commission, Divisional Waterways and Wetlands, the Army Corps of Engineers, and the Falmouth Selectmen. Location is one fifty-seven Shorewood Drive, East Falmouth, area affected Great Pond. Interested parties may review the Falmouth hearing at the Selectmen's Office. Publication dates, Friday, May sixteenth, and Friday, May thirteenth. The applicant, please.
Good evening, my name's Ken Rybogel, I'm with the firm of Jacklin and Golling, we're representing Nino and Grace Federico, the applicants. We're here requesting a special permit to rebuild an existing dock. Uh, the location of the dock is one fifty-seven Shorewood Drive, um, it faces the easterly shore of, of Great Pond, there are docks to the north of the lot, and there are docks to the south of the lot, there are also docks across the other side of Great Pond. What we're proposing is to rebuild a dock that was damaged during the winter, two winters ago, and was further damaged last winter. Mr. Federico and his wife purchased the property recently this fall, the previous owner was elderly, and he was not able to maintain the property, that's why it was damaged by the winter storms. What we're proposing to do is rebuild the walkway to the dock across the, um, the entrance that's close to the shore, thirty-three feet by four feet. The dock itself is thirty-nine feet long by four feet wide, there's a ramp, that's, I believe it's, uh, three point five feet wide by twelve feet long, and there will be a float at the end, that is sixteen by six feet. That's the exact same dimensions as the pre-existing dock, and the same footprint, and the same configuration as the pre-existing dock. Um, the new dock will have planking that is translucent, will allow fifty percent of sunlight to pass through it, uh, all new wood will be non-CCA wood, there's gonna be electric and water service that'll be run to the dock, underneath the, uh, side of the dock, to the end of the permanent part of the dock. Also, we're gonna have lateral access for fishing and filing will be added to the dock We filed a notice of intent, and we had a hearing, uh, March ninth, the Conservation Commission approved the project issued an order of conditions. Prior to the hearing, we submitted a copy of the proposal to the harbor master, he went out and inspected the project, and he submitted an inspection report to Conservation Commission, he said there are no mooring issues, there are no, um, navigation issues. This is a copy of this report. Uh, we'd just like to summarize by saying, this is an area where there are docks both to the north and south, and across this, the other side of the, uh, pond, it's an area appropriate for a dock. This is rebuilding an existing dock, in the same footprint, same dimensions, and same configuration as the original dock.
Questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Um, according to the plan that I have, it shows a float, but it doesn't show a T at the end of the float.
I'm sorry, it doesn't show?
A T, is there a T dock at the end of the float?
No, it's not a T configuration, um, it's being built in the same configuration as the original dock.
And where, where is it anticipated that the boat will be tied? Alongside the float?
Yes, yes. Here's the, um, the end of the float, the dock, docking area would be on this side.
On the side, on the...
Yes.
Okay. And, and then, is, there is one boat, it doesn't also say the number of boats, is there just one boat?
I don't know the number of boats, I assume that...
Well, usually, we only approve for one boat, unless there are extending, extenuating circumstances.
There'd be only room for one boat to be docked at a time.
I think that that should be specified in that vote. Yeah, thank you, those were my...
Those were my-
Any other questions? Could you explain about how the ramp was put in without any valid order of conditions when it was first put in? Again, you said it was an existing dock and ramp that was legal, but the ramp was put in under a notice of intent a while ago, but there were no valid order of conditions established with that ramp. Have you looked into that?
Yes, we searched the building records for the town and the other records. We did find an aerial photograph that shows the dock existence 1991. And one of the previous owners did apply for an RDA in 1993. He was denied, and is recommended that he go for a notice of intent. I don't know that he actually did that. We had conferences with Jen McKay from the Conservation Commission. Her position was that it was an existing dock and that we did not have to meet all of the existing conditions. That's why it's not a T configuration at the end. We're allowed to rebuild exactly the same configuration, the footprint.
Well, I guess I'm not sure I agree with that establishment of a, beginning to rebuild something that was not built according to an order of conditions previously. And again, it's similar to the last case where it was something that was never approved, so you don't necessarily get to rebuild something that hadn't been approved by a previous board. And so, I do have a little bit of concern about whether we allow people to do something illegally or inappropriate, then come to us and saying we have a right to rebuild what was there because it was existing. Saying, not when you file for a notice of intent in 1983 and then don't follow the rules that are put forward. I understand it's not the current homeowner who did this, but- It does give me a little bit of a pause. I guess I might want some more information also. Do you know if a shellfish evaluation was done on this?
Jen, she said that there's no shellfish survey required, so I don't know if there was a previous shellfish survey ever done for the area.
Okay, well, I guess I would like to see a shell- I mean, I know it's not up to, they may not have asked for it, but I guess the harbor master's recommended that one be done, and I guess I would like to see one before I would be willing to approve this.
I'd like to make a comment about the shellfish report. He misinterpreted an email from the DEP. They assumed that the dock was going to be expanded and built in a larger dock, which is not correct. That's why they put in that comment about the dock.
He's not here. We just have a recommendation that the shellfish survey be done. So, I would agree with the chair.
Well, the-
His note does say give it the dock-
The dock is not being expanded. It's being rebuilt in exactly the same footprint and dimensions. And so, DMF misunderstood what the project was.
You know, I'd still be inclined to, even if DMF doesn't want it, I'd like to be comfortable with what the effect it could have. And it doesn't mean it wouldn't happen, it just might there be, that we would have some mitigation plans in order that if, as we were doing some construction down there, I assume there are going to be some piers being rebuilt and put into it. It's not just a new decking on top of old piers, right?
Yes.
The substrate and low water level is going to be disturbed.
There'll be some service.
Right. And so, there certainly could just be some shellfish down there that are, we'd like to know how many shellfish are there down there that are going to be killed or-
My comment is that generally, the Conservation Commission addresses the issues of this shellfish and whether a shellfish survey would be required.
Well, again, if this were a fully permitted dock that was being replaced, I would agree with you. The fact that there are issues with it being done, not by an order of valid order of conditions, is what makes me say, well, we actually almost have to look at this as a new application. And that's where it falls into much more of our jurisdiction than the Conservation Commission. And so, unfortunately, that lack of order of conditions of the rampway is, for me, is a little bit of a stumbling block for this. I would suggest that if you come back with a shellfish evaluation, that there's a good chance that the board will say, well, it doesn't seem like it is going to cause problems, or there are mitigations that can be done, and it would make sense. But I just would like to have that information before I would feel completely comfortable.
I agree. I'm going to make the motion to table this until that time.
I think you will have to hold an entirely new hearing, because two of us who are hearing it will not be here. And you need at least four people from the first hearing to have the tent to continue the second hearing. So, it's just noticing it and having the same discussion again, but under a new hearing. I think that's-
Would you explain to me, under special conditions, any shellfish uncovered during
construction shall be relayed to a location approved by the Marine and Environmental Services? So, in reading that, no shellfish have been uncovered at this time that this was written. This is coming from the Conservation Committee, under special conditions.
And they haven't started construction, so in some ways, that could be the mitigation. You know, I think it's an excellent thing to point out that I had overlooked, that could take care of the shellfish concerns that I was putting forward. Does anyone who'd like to speak on behalf of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this application? We can either move to table it and start a new hearing, or we can close the hearing and make a vote.
We move to table it.
I'll second.
We have motioned a second to table the hearing, which will actually mean to-
Hold it.
Hold a new hearing at a later date, once we have that shellfish plan. Any further discussion? Okay, we have motioned a second to table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Then off to another time.
Thank you.
Okay.
Next hearing, and this is a liquor license violation hearing for all alcohol club license of the Cape Verdean Club, 126 Sandwich Road. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, which requires that the board of selectmen investigate complaints regarding liquor licenses with the witnesses under oath. In order to comply with the statute, all persons intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand.
Mr. Chair, you may want to repeat that, since new people are coming in the room.
If you're intending to testify on this hearing, on General Laws, Chapter 138, 64, you must testify with the witnesses under oath. In order to comply with the statute, all persons intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Mr. Suss, will we make sure that we note in record that all persons intending to testify at this hearing stood and took an oath prior to the task?
Duly noted.
So, Chief Don, if you would give us a brief summary of the reason for our hearing.
Good evening. Thank you for having this. I come to you before the board tonight as the police chief with some great concerns as to the management, how the management is running the Cape Verdean Club, and request that you review the licensing on this. And let me explain why. On April 10, 2016, approximately 10:30 PM, the department received several calls of gunshots from the neighbors of the Cape Verdean Club, which is located at 126 Sandwich Road. Responding officers arrived at the club within minutes and discovered only one vehicle in the parking lot and one individual, who was a security guard. Apparently, that evening, there was an event, and it was called the, picture of the flyer, it was called the Hip Hop Shop Open Mic Night. The department started speaking with some neighbors, as well as the security guard. No one reported seeing anything, but recall hearing seven to eight gunshots. While we were at the club, dispatch received a phone call from the ER, Falmouth Hospital ER, reporting a male subject had just come into the ER with a gunshot wound to the knee. Officers responded to Falmouth Hospital to interview that individual, and it was later learned that he was present at the Cape Verdean Club for this music event. Through the investigation, it was determined that during the event, management learned that either one or more individuals attending the event were armed with handguns, at which point, they shut down the event and moved the individuals, their patrons, out into the parking lot and locked the doors. Once in the parking lot, it was learned that eight to 10 individuals began fighting, and at some point during the fight, the suspect began shooting at a victim as he ran from the parking lot towards Percival Road, striking him in the leg. It is my opinion that the Cape Verdean Club management failure to notify the police department of an armed individual or individuals in the club is negligent and irresponsible, which ultimately creates a dangerous situation for its patrons, staff, neighbors, and law enforcement alike. And that's why I requested the board review the licensing as to whether or not they're operating the club responsible. I have with me also here tonight Detective Dave Massey. He is the investigator on this case, and he has spoken personally with management through this investigation, and he can enlighten you as to their conversations, as to when they became aware that there were guns in the club. If you wish, you can have him speak with you.
Yes, we will.
Good evening. I am the investigating officer. This is an active and ongoing investigation. As a result of my investigation, I did talk to some of the management of the club, one of the security guards that was there. Through the investigation, I learned that management, as well as the security guard, were notified of the firearm being present. There was an altercation in the club at some point between a male and a female where a firearm was shown. An unknown individual reported the incident to management, and they made the determination to close the club and have everybody leave. I talked to several of the management, and they all confirmed this.
Any other questions?
Just one more thing. Upon reviewing our records, and I believe, I think Selectman Flynn was on the board at the time, there's a lot of similarities to this incident, to an incident that occurred in 2010, where one of our officers was injured, and there was a stabbing at the club, and we met with management back then. Then Chief Riallo was here, and all sorts of promises were made. And if you read the minutes from all those different hearings, you'll see. And as far as I know, none of them have been kept, and that's why I say I brought them forward today.
Any questions? Ms. Barr?
Officer, when you say management knew of the gun in the club, could you specify the names of the individuals with, referring specifically to individuals who were here to testify today?
Yes, Roy Rose and Wesley Lake.
Wesley?
Yes, Lake.
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 Thank you.
Apologies.
And-
The security guard as well. I don't know if he works for the club or is a contracted, is Tracy Williams.
Thank you, and a question for the chief?
Sure.
Mr. Chair. I have reviewed the minutes. Appreciate you providing that background. Could you specify the promises that were not kept for the record?
There were several hearings on that last one. The one that I'm talking about, I believe, is the minutes are dated December 6, 2010, and where Roy Rose, management, met with Chief Riallo and offered a seven-step program that the club would address. Join Falmouth Taxi Safe Ride Program regarding noise complaints, sound check for volumes, and monitor. Security will be hired for the club inside and out. Cruisers will check the parking lot between 12:30 and 1:30 AM. Police chief, this is the one that comes out here, the police chief will be notified of all functions. All bartenders will be tip-certified. The manager will observe all guests in the club, and the club will meet with the police every three months. It's also written here, and I believe, and Selectman Flynn had made this statement in here, it's in the minutes, that the board of directors regarding the Stephen Scheff should put it in writing. I don't know if it's ever been put around, I can say since I've been chief, I've never seen that.
Thank you. That answers my question.
Any questions?
I just have one question. What is the regulation of carrying a gun into a private club? What are, what's the law?
Well, first of all, you'd have to be a licensed individual, and we're not sure the individuals that were there were licensed.
Okay.
It's part of the investigation, and we're looking into that.
All right, let's just-
And as far as their rules and regulations at the club, I'm not familiar with all their rules and regulations, whether or not they prohibit firearms from the club.
That's what I'm asking.
That would be, you'd have to speak to the management on that one.
Okay, all right.
Well, I would like to ask the president of the club if they permit anyone to commit to the club and use the club carrying a weapon. Or do, and do you have a written policy?
No, we don't allow it, and we don't have a written policy.
You don't have a written, you don't allow it?
No, we don't allow it.
Then how is it that the people who came that night have handguns?
We don't know if they did or not. I was told that somebody had one, never know who it was or anything, so I made the decision to close it down and let everybody go for the safety of anybody, just in case.
Let's Mr. Rosa present his case.
Oh, okay.
And then we'll ask some questions and introduce yourself. I think we have our questions answered from the, please. Mr. Rose, would you like to explain the situation? Introduce yourself.
Roy Rose, president of the Cape Verdean Club. Now, hearing more of this, I really think that we're not prepared, and I would really seek counsel, want to seek counsel, if I can get a continuance, because there's more coming up than what we were aware of, as far as the report, if, all possible.
Say, anyone else who'd like to speak?
I'd like to say a few things. My name is Wesley Lake, vice president. A few years ago, these incidences, some of them happened, some of them didn't. Let's a little bit argue, we can argue about that point along the way. But the management changed, so all those things that were talked about with the chief could no longer be instituted by us, because it changed, because we're a club, so we change. But some of the-
I guess I'm not sure what you mean. I'm not sure how you couldn't get tip-certified, communicate with the chief.
No, no.
It's all things that were listed.
Yeah, we ought, we are tip-certified, but you didn't question our alcohol, did you?
We questioned the things that you just said that the management, your new management couldn't do.
We had already did all that. We're all tip-certified. We have a zero tolerance in the club. As far as the chief goes, as far as, are other clubs doing the same thing?
Other thing, other clubs had not agreed in 2010 that they were going to do the-
We didn't agree either. It never was laid down on paper, it never, we never sat with the chief and wrote out anything. This is all supposition and hearsay.
Actually, it's an official minutes of our meeting, in which it was recorded that you guys, that your club would write that down and agree to it, and that was a stipulation of continuing the hearing.
Again, it changed.
I'm not sure what the, it is that changed.
The management changed, so we had no more control to do that.
I guess a new license should have been issued if the management had changed.
It was. But you're, I agree, we have to probably get an attorney so we can write everything that you want to, that you listed there.
Is anyone else who'd like to speak? I will point out, as you keep speaking, it is not being continued, it's being debated.
Mark Fineran, Trotting Pack Road, T ticket. I was actually there that evening. I'm a member of the Cape Verdean Club. The kids that were doing the show are actually people that I know. I know their whole family. Their grandmother is my neighbor. They had done this one time previous. It was supposedly a Sunday night thing once a month. I was actually driving home the first time, and we stopped, there was maybe 20 or 25 people. I was driving home again, and I saw the place was rather-
I was driving home again, and I saw the place was rather crowded. I went in, and actually, Mike Halen and Rich Rogers were filming it. It was very busy, lively night. The place did get very crowded. It was, I was surprised they had as much, as many people in there as they did. It was quite well-attended. I know all these people. They're all my friends, I mean, my neighbors. They have been doing a fairly good job managing the place of late. They've invested a lot of money into it. They put some money in the exterior. But that evening, the place got really crowded. And I'm not, to be honest with you, I'm not a big fan of the music. So I decided I was going to leave. As I was walking across, I told the guys that were filming it, that were friends of mine also, that I was going home. And the lights came on, they shut the place down. I asked Roy what went on. He said someone said someone saw a gun. He closed the place down immediately. We own motels, bars, restaurants. I've worked in bars, restaurants, as a bartender, as a doorman. All they got was a word that someone said someone saw a gun, and they closed the place down immediately. I thought what they did was extremely responsible. I paid my tab. I went out in the parking lot. I spoke with a few individuals. The place emptied out in a quite orderly fashion. I heard no gunshots. By the time I left, I would say 75% of the people that were there were already gone. And I went to, I went down the next morning, and I spoke to Roy again. And he told me that they had just, someone had told him that someone saw a gun. I, from there, I went to the police station, and I spoke with the police. And I told them exactly what I saw. I've been in this business, you know, on and off. Like I said, we grew up in the business. And I thought they were extremely responsible. He never saw a gun. Someone just told him someone had a gun. He closed the place down, and they were making money. And another thing, when they, the management took over this club, they were about $20,000 in the hole. They've improved the building. They have their debt down to about $800. And I think they've been doing quite a decent job. As I say, they're my friends and my neighbors, and I joined the club. I saw nothing there that evening that would warrant any kind of punishment. But that's just what I saw. I wasn't there when there was any, where any gunshots fired. My understanding was that it was down behind Papa Jake's, off their property. I also like to say that I'm on the scholarship committee there now. They do a basketball tournament, which they, in the summertime, that Bobby Ganzalves runs. And I've helped them out with that for years. I put a lot of my own time and a lot of my own money into it. But, no, this has to do with the management. And they've been extremely responsible to, by everything that I've seen. And they were responsible that evening. I mean, I just happened to be there. I don't see what more they could have done. And as I say, I don't believe this happened on the premises. And it was at least 20 minutes or half an hour after they closed. And I was out back for 10 minutes. I saw no fight. And I could only tell you what I saw until I left. Thanks.
Anyone else? Just to reiterate, this is the only people who testified under oath prior to the hearing.
Yeah, my name is Robert Peanut. I'd get sworn in, but I'm not kind of testifying what happened.
And I'm afraid we cannot speak if you did not swear in. You had to, sworn in.
Can I do that right now?
I actually have to check the regulations on that. According to this, I can. Is there anyone else who plans to speak this evening, so I can swear them in now? Do you solemnly swear to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, sir. Okay, so my name is Robert Peanut, Falmouth resident. Quite frankly, I'm not really an active member of the Cape Verdean Club. And I've only been in there twice in the last three or four years. However, I'm Cape Verdean descent, and I understand the importance of the, this club to our culture.
Were you there that evening?
I was not there that evening.
Okay, we were just trying to get information about that evening and the management's response to the incident that evening. We are not here to debate the merits of the club, the advantages of it. We know that they contribute tons to the town. And that's not what we're here to debate. It would not be appropriate. What we're here to look into are the incident that evening and the management's response to that incident. So if there's something you can contribute that gets to that, we'd be happy to hear that.
If there's nothing I can contribute regarding the specifics of that night, then...
Or if there's an incident, a similar incident that you occurred, and you saw the way they reacted to that, that could be useful also.
Just here to say what I heard was exactly what the gentleman who spoke before me, I met just the other night for the first time. And what strikes me, what Mr. Roy said here tonight was that they closed it down instantly. And the gentleman, the, who the chief of police said that when they got there, there was nobody there, so it's all consistent. So they may have had some missteps, but they certainly didn't have any missteps when it came to safety. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Anyone? Mr. Rose?
No, as far as the tips, the town did receive all the tip certifications. That's on record. And in my background, I got, I have 35 years' experience in security. So that's why, as soon as I heard, heard a gun, that somebody had one, didn't have to see it. Safety of everybody else, clear it out, let everybody get out, and go.
Okay, so the big question is, if you're at that concern that you close the place down immediately, which I think is a great step, why is it the police were not called immediately?
Because it's hearsay. It's like I was asked, why didn't I, why did I close it down and not see or kick out that one person or whoever it was? I didn't see anything. I can't go on assumption.
You did. I mean, you closed the place down.
As far as calling the police on an assumption?
Absolutely. I would hope everyone out there would say, if you are assuming and heard her say that there's a gun, call the police. That's what our town, that's what our government is responsible. If you're concerned, if you have a reason to be concerned and take action, if you have speculation and believe that there's a gun, that someone's walking around with a gun, absolutely call the police. That's what they would say, that's what I would say, and it's the right thing to do. And I'm very, very concerned that you would take any action. Assumption you hear a gun, you're concerned about it, the police are the first people to call.
I think, I think, I've heard a couple of things here. You know, first of all, that you had a change in officers. So there's always that issue of, you know, past history not being shared and passed on, or past procedures and that sort of thing. So I think that Chairman Flynn's recommendation back in 2010 or 2011 that you write these procedures down is an important way for managing an organization that is going to turn over. But somehow or other, that method of doing business needs to get carried along, right? And, you know, I hear what you're saying, you made an assumption. But in any organization, you're going to have turnover. And how do you essentially indoctrinate the people that follow on so that the lessons learned in the past get passed along, you know? And I think that's what we're struggling with, is the fact that, you know, there was an incident in 2010, and now in 2015, or is it 2016? 2016. And, you know, the lessons didn't get passed along. And how do we ensure? And I, you know, I want to say to the gentleman that just got up there who was worried about, you know, the branding of the Cape Verdean community, that's not what this is about. I mean, I have tremendous respect for the citizens of this town that come from that kind of cultural background or identity. This is all about management of a particular club activity and making sure that you shut the place down, but what happens outside is also somewhat your responsibility too. And I think that's where the police need to be pulled in to try to intervene in case there is a follow-on incident, which obviously happened.
We have, we have, we have called the police. And we have no problem calling the police when there's incident. That's, I have no problem doing that at all. But like I said, somebody just telling me it has a gun, it could be somebody that had a beef with somebody, and they just was trying to get them out. So my thing was, don't separate or pick out anybody. Just everybody gone, it's over. And really, by our clock, we shut it down at 10 o'clock, which really was 9:45. Because it's 15 minutes ahead, so then we get everybody out before the 1 o'clock time. And yes, we understand that there was a shooting. But to us, it was down the road. So what we, that's decided as a board, that we're buying the security cameras also to put up on the outside for future. Because it's just, we don't know. If it's happening now, if we get the cameras up, then everybody will know what happened.
I'm struck by two major concerns. One is, it doesn't sound like you would call the police if this happened again. And that really concerns me. And the second is that this incident did occur, did initiate in your building, but you're taking no responsibility for a shooting that did the interaction between the people. The gun was there, and this could have been prevented if the police had been called.
That's why I initially said that.
If people had stopped testifying, I think we might have headed in that direction. But I asked if more of you wanted to speak, and it continued to be given the information. So we are in condition of investigating further. Anyone else like to speak? Yeah, I'm sorry you do, just because we have the microphone to yield it.
These things you mentioned to us, we're heading towards all of that. And to put it down in writing, I agree with this, is it Mr. Patterson? I agree with that 100%, because then you can carry it on. And it's easy steps to do. As far as calling the police department, I originally closed, I mean, we kind of closed the club kind of together. I closed it because there was an argument. But he came around the corner and said something, somebody said that they saw a gun. So we kind of timed in.
Why wasn't there a phone call because there was an argument? Sufficient enough to close the establishment? I would hope that every establishment out there that's going to close because an argument would say, great time to call the police. They're the ones who are going to help this argument. If there's an argument that is going to, as Mr. Fineran said, you guys are making tons of money. If there's an argument sufficient enough to close, that's evidence, call the police.
No, for us, it's zero tolerance. You were told to calm down. If you didn't calm down, we closed. There was no violence, nobody hit each other. It was just, they didn't want to calm down, so we had to close it up. It's easier to close it up.
Calm down, I mean, you said, you're the one who said argument.
Yeah.
As opposed to just...
Well, that's verbal. Just the verbal argument, that's all they had. They weren't touching each other. They didn't get into any of that. All it was, I asked security to go and calm down. If they didn't calm down, we closed up. We felt that was safe. We didn't feel any reason to call the police for that. Because there is a negative part of calling the police all the time too, because you used that against us as well.
It's going to now make the question, how often do you call the police since 2010?
We don't need to.
Then there isn't...
There hasn't been no incidences, right?
Okay, Mr. Patterson?
In deference to the suggestion of the officers of the club, I think we should table this and allow them to bring their attorney in to represent them and maybe bring out more of what happened.
Yeah, because we...
I don't, I don't think we should be in a judge and jury position, given the sensitivity of what's going on, the possibility of whose response.
One reason why I would support that is I would like to find out something about the description of the change in management so that they can say, yes, we're eight brand-new people, kind of situation. I mean, I would like to have more details of that for concerns about 2010. I'm concerned enough about the lack of action calling the police and still a resistance to call the police that I would be willing to...
No resistance to call the police at all.
Well, I'm sorry, a few times I asked Mr. Rose. I don't think I would do it next time.
I don't, that's...
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I think we could get into discussion of a policy that should or should not have been in place. And I don't think it's appropriate right now.
Okay, someone in the, had it in the back? And you were sworn in, sir?
I'm not going to be sworn in.
I'm sorry, no, I did give enough opportunity.
Well, I still would like to table it really at the request of the officers of the club because I think it's appropriate.
Yeah, we would like all these questions also because they weren't presented in your letter to us. Because then we could have had more appropriate answers for you.
If the board were to consider a continuance, I think that it would be very productive if the current management would meet with the chief of police as, you know, to review some of these standards that the board looks to in terms of the safety of the community and to maybe vet the club's reticence to, you know, really taking advantage of the assistance of the department that this board holds highly in terms of importance and the safety of the community. So I think that would be a good use of time.
Absolutely.
To continue this for two weeks or so.
I mean, all the things that the chief mentioned, all the things the chief mentioned about different things and different things that we haven't heard before, but we hear now. I don't see a problem with implementing any of that.
So this is your notice, just as it was in writing?
Exactly. Yeah, absolutely. I don't see a problem with that. I mean, we're already heading in that direction. I think we've been doing that. We haven't had any problems at the club. I mean, certain things you do, you have problems with, and you try to get security, that's not going to happen anymore, that type of venue. So most of our stuff is just giving things to give money away, rentals and stuff.
Well, again, a continuance will be, starting a whole new hearing because we will have a new board at that time.
No new board?
No.
No, no, our...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes.
Not a whole new board, but we have to start over again.
And that's why I moved to table it, not continuance, but table it. Because it's essentially, we're going to pick up with the hearing we get.
No, we can't. We have to start again because we will not have...
Yes.
That's what he said.
I didn't hear a second, so I don't know.
Well, we'll take our opportunity to get the stuff done, and we will make an appointment with the chief to go over all these concerns of his and make changes.
I can't support not having a hearing tonight unless there's a stipulation that the club agrees, until we have the hearing, to overstep their current decision about when to call the police. And saying, you know, until we come up with a policy, until we come up with a procedure...
That's not a problem.
I think that's...
Is that the board's opinion or your opinion?
Excuse me?
You're out of line, sir.
Yeah, not, it's, believe me when I tell you, that's not a problem. Calling the police is the easiest thing in the world.
It troubles me that it wasn't the easiest thing in this night in which someone got shot, and that was not the easiest thing. I'm still very, very troubled by that, and I'm troubled that it...
You're assuming that we were aware that this person had a gun.
So that'll be the subject of the next hearing.
You know what I'm saying? So we were not...
I guess what I'm saying is, if it happens again, and someone says, someone says a gun, and it's hearsay.
Absolutely, call the police.
And you shut down, that you call the police, and that you agree...
I definitely agree with that.
That you'll err on the side of, we're going to call the police way more often than we used to, until we get this all ironed down.
As long as they don't beat us up over it, okay?
Well, say that. I'm going to second the motion. I'm going to second the motion.
Okay.
Motion and a second to table this hearing.
And I want to thank you guys, and believe me, we'll come in line with what you need.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to have some more discussion on this. What is it that we need to know this evening to make a decision tonight and not to table it? But how, how close are we coming to the next part of having a vote? Or it will start all over from the very beginning? Because there's an awfully lot that has been said by different people that really doesn't match. And so I don't know if we're at a point to say, let it continue to run as it is running and call the police when there is an issue? Or change the time of when it can be open until there is a full hearing? Or is it a matter that you just table it right now and wait until it's back on the agenda again? And everything just goes back to status quo the way it was before April 10? So that's...
The motion has been to continue the hearing with an expectation that the club during that time, until the hearing happens, that they're going to exercise extreme caution about calling the police. And that's, that's what the motion is right now.
And the only stipulation is that they call the police when they feel they need to. That's the only stipulation you're giving.
I think to do so is to actually hold the hearing. And that's the only reason why, either we're holding the hearing or not. And that was, would make me feel a little more comfortable with tableing it.
Well, if I may, the other stipulation is that they're going to meet with the police with respect to the policy suggestions that were started back in 2010. with respect to the policy suggestions that were started back in 2010. And just as an aside, when an applicant has asked for an opportunity for a continuance based upon a request to obtain counsel, that that's going to be given great weight going forward with the A B C C and otherwise. So that's another reason to continue.
Okay.
Mr. Patterson?
Yeah, I, what I don't want us to do is punish the entire club for the actions of few people who may not even have been members of the club, quite honestly. So what I'm looking for is a positive constructive outcome here, and I, that's why I think having an attorney involved is probably a good idea, because once that person gets involved, then their likelihood is that there's going to be a set of action steps, and we'll be able to follow up to make sure that those have actually taken place. But, you know, I'm, I'm really reluctant to be punitive at this point. I think a constructive measure might be that anytime there is a social event, that the police actually be notified that it's going to be going on, so they could actually drop in on a, you know, random basis to just check to make sure that everything is being conducted in an orderly way. As sort of a proactive, and not in response to an incident that they may not even know is going on, but just from now until we have those procedures for conducting events are in writing, and we're comfortable that the, that the club has adopted it and is taking it seriously, that they proactively call the police and let them know whenever there's a social event that's taking place. So I, I mean, I, that would be just my personal advice to them. I don't think we can impose that on them.
Oh, I do think, I think we can.
Well, okay.
And I would be, Mr. Rose, do you think you would have, your club would have any problem informing the police when you're going to have a public event?
No. No, we can do that.
You don't feel it'd be a hardship for us to say between now and the hearing that anytime you're going to have one, that you'd be happy to let them know it's going to?
No, I know the chief, I'm worried about baby showers and stuff like that, though, right? You're talking about.
A lot.
Yes, no problem.
Motion a second.
So we have motion a second, and if it's okay, I think with the idea that the club would be informing the police department of significant events and be, feel a little more compelled to call in the case of a, of an incident.
Also, we have utilized them for details also, for some functions that we had in the past. So it's not out of the question not to do that also.
And I would hope that, we should actually, I think, table this to a time specific, so that we know, we all know when this is going to happen. I know our agenda for next week is fairly busy, but I also want to give your chance to confer with your council, and so I'm not sure if we want to do it as quickly as the 23rd.
Three or four weeks, so that the new board can.
Probably talking, meeting in June? Yeah, I would think the first week of June, but I'd like to get this done for everyone's sake as soon as we can. Next meeting's June 6th. June 6th. Shall we set it June 6th at 7:30? So we have motion a second to table this for June 6th at 7:30 with the stipulations we put forward. Okay? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, none? We'll see you on June 6th. All right, moving back to our summary of actions. We have the final draft of the special legislation for John Busby. You can see that there are two pieces to this motion. So this is an petition to the great General Court relative to retirement benefit of retired police officer John R. Busby Jr., the Town Hall Police Department. The first item would be, as was suggested at town meeting, and this would be asking for the current rate of regular compensation, should be determined as effective of the date of the act. And it would be a one-time increase to establish a new annual retirement allowance for John R. Busby. In addition, he would continue to receive current cost of living adjustments and any eligible veteran's allowance to which he's entitled, just to be aware from a financial point of view. If the act is passed, the retirement board would have to pay it, but it would be billed back to the town, so it's something that does come back to the town to fill that in. The second request is to whether we want to give Mr. Busby the option of having there be survivor benefits in addition. Ms. Martin?
I think my question when we first were having this discussion, do we have a dollar amount? I understand there was some discussion in the finance committee at one point in talking what the dollar amount came to, and I don't know that that's ever been brought over to this question.
Remember, that's about $66,000 is roughly what the benefit would be.
Per, per year? And we're talking how many years?
Forever.
How long does he live?
How long is he?
Going back? Where are we starting?
It's not retroactive.
No retroactive, starting 2016, going forward, $66,000 a year. And then benefits to any family members or whoever.
That's the second item. And one item is that it would just be for him until he dies. And the second is to whether, and what we proposed here, I believe, are survivor benefits. It would be going to his surviving spouse in accordance with the statute.
Well, it's customary that any employee, when you're an employee, and you just sign into the retirement system, and you decide, you decide as the employee, whether you want to have your pension include upon your death, a wife or another beneficiary, it could be a brother, an uncle, somebody like that. And usually, the individual makes that determination. So I'm not clear about whether.
It's included here in the second.
No, whether he included as a member of the family or his wife as his surviving spouse originally when he retired. Do we know that? Because I don't know why the question's even being raised, to be honest with you.
I believe he had not put it forward that the spouse was in his own, this is, at this time, giving him the option either to agree to the full pay or agreeing to a lesser amount, and then there would be a survivor spouse benefit.
Yeah, I think that's important to realize, that when a person signs up for a retirement, essentially, annuity. But there's a difference. If you are just taking the benefit for yourself, it's a higher amount than if you include a spouse, because, you know, you're trying to look at it as some sort of actuarial responsibility on the part of the retirement board. So, but can we not, you say, are you confident that in fact no spousal benefit was, was signed up for when he became disabled?
I'm not positive about that, but I'm not sure that's even relevant, because this is going to be a new, a new benefit paid forward.
So this is going to be an option?
Right. This could be an option.
Then why don't we just simply word it that way? That we approve the possibility that there, that the option for spousal benefit is extended to.
If we want to extend it.
If he chooses.
All right.
Right. We can't give him the option is what's proposed.
But I don't, I don't know why it wouldn't be his option anyway. I mean, if there's an amount determined, when you retire, there's an amount determined that you're going to receive.
Because we're doing this under special act. And so the initial, the initial thing that we were putting for a special act was just to raise his retirement up to $67,000.
For him.
For him. And it was suggested that, as we're all suggesting, typically when you get a retirement package, you may choose to take a lesser amount and have a survivor benefit. And so it's put forward that, do we want to include that option in this case also? Because of the standard.
Because it's part of the special act. It's so, we're not talking about retirement regulations.
No, it's just this special act for, it's one individual, so it has to be stipulated in a specific act of this document. So how do we feel about having, giving him the option of a survivor benefit?
Do we need a vote on that?
Well, we do need to have a vote on actually approving the final draft that is in your package, that includes items one, two, and three.
I'm going to move that be approved, the draft including items one, two, and three.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, none, the ayes have. All right. Next is authorize the water quality management committee to submit and receive a Southeast New England National Estuaries Program grant to conduct a preliminary study for a stream nitrogen removal system, collaboration with MBL researcher Dr. Ken Foreman. Is, see her to us?
There's she.
I thought you were over the left side. And we do have two different requests, both very closely related, so we're going to actually ask you to talk about the other one, which is to, same kind of grant, but to conduct additional monitoring for the Westfalm Harbor shoreline septic remediation grant.
Hi, I see a couple of technical consultant to the water quality management committee. You have before you two requests to submit grants to the Southeast New England Estuaries Project. The first one is a, is a new proposal, the solicitation, it's a request for proposals that has just come out. There are two separate sections. One is for new grants, and that is for towns only. And this is a project that looks at developing permeable reactive barrier technology in a new application, which is to remediate the significant amount of nitrate that comes into the heads of our estuaries from the streams, from the freshwater streams. So they come in with hundreds to thousands of kilograms by the mass estuaries project. And so this is to take that familiar concept of permeable barriers and see if we can use it to get that source. In some ways, these streams have collected all the groundwater from the upper watersheds, and so are very high in nitrogen concentration, nitrate concentration in particular. So we're just exploring that, and the key is for us to understand residence time. This will not work as a project or a, a technical implementation if we can't, if it takes too long for the stream to flow through and denitrify. So this is a project to do a number of studies so that we can quantify the actual amount of substrate we would need and how fast we'd need it. And then we can do the engineering and decide whether we need acres or feet, you know. So it's a very important preliminary proof of concept, so we're hoping that you'll allow us to submit that grant. And it's a total of $35,000. The second one, which I'll talk in unison with, is a different category in the same solicitation. And it is for projects that have already been funded by SNAP. So we received $250,000 for the Westfalm Harbor shoreline septic remediation project. We're, I'm happy to report that we've got 20 installations, and they're all going in, and we've been out there the past two weeks watching the last of them. It's very exciting. And that project has been very successful, and some monitoring is going on, but SNAP, the estuaries project recognized that additional funding to characterize more fully, more time was necessary to really understand how these septic systems work, because they're innovative and alternative. And so they put a separate category that we're not competing with in the other category. So only projects that have already been funded by SNAP can apply for monitoring funds. And so the additional $25,000 is a continuation, if you will, of the existing grant that we have. So there are two separate categories in the RFP. One is for a new project, one is just to continue the existing work we're already doing.
Any questions? Mistress White?
Thank you. Ron Zweig, Precinct 5, also a member of the Water Quality Management Committee. In terms of these two projects, the first one was fully vetted by the, by a subgroup as well as the committee. The second one, the committee has not seen or has not been vetted at all. I don't know what's in that exactly. It's a, it's a follow-on to an earlier project that ended in June, I think it was in June, but there's been no real, I don't even, I, as a member of the committee, I don't even know really what's in this exactly, and what, how it would be achieved. But in terms of our process with the committee, we do discuss things, go back and forth, and come up with, with some, some changes often or different things, even in preliminary proposals like this. So I just want to say that, that it seems that it's, as I say, putting the cart before the horse a little bit, because we haven't really gone through the vetting or discussion of this specifically. I went through all the minutes and, and the agenda items, and I couldn't find anything. But the, but, you know, the idea, I can't comment on the merits, because I don't know really what's, what's being proposed. Thank you.
Charlie?
Virginia Valieyla, Vice Chair of the Water Quality Management Committee and Precinct 5. I became aware of Mr. Zweig's concern just supper time tonight, that the second request had not been fully vetted. It was put on your agenda by Chairman Turkington, because the committee was unanimously in support of the experiment being conducted in Westfalm with the innovative alternative septic systems, and because it was anticipated that there would be monitoring and following on monitoring. So he did not think it was necessary to bring a project that had already been approved and that we get regular updates on back and, and vet it again. So I see this as a technical issue or procedural quibble, but I do have a solution if the selectmen feel that more vetting is needed. And that is that you would approve submittal of this grant request with the condition that the Water Quality Committee review it at our meeting on Thursday. We have posted our agenda, but we still are within the 48 hours. So we could revise that agenda so that this topic is on it, and so by Thursday, you will have a vote in support of what you're considering tonight.
I'm agreeing with your motion.
Yeah, I think the only benefit for vetting this second piece here is the methodology for doing the monitoring, and I, I don't know, perhaps Ron or Virginia could tell me, is the monitoring already sort of set in stone, the techno, the techniques that, or I should say, to see it? I mean, is that methodology already pretty much a script?
In fact, it is. In fact, Barnstable County Department of Health and Environment is the subcontractor on the monitoring, and we spent months developing a QUAP, which is a Quality Assurance Policy Plan, for the exact timing of the sampling, what needs to be done for the sampling, what's being sampled. That, it's a, it's a voluminous document, and so the actual monitoring protocols, and in fact, this continued monitoring is, is part of what was envisioned in the original grant. There's always been a sense that if we could get money to do additional monitoring, we would, because with these innovative alternative systems, they may foul over the course of years. So it was, it's in the original QUAP. So there is a methodology, very well established, through Barnstable County, who does this professionally. They have the Alternative Task Center.
Thank you. So let's hand out item B first. If we could just handle them separately, please. Item B is the preliminary study for a stream nitrogen removal system.
You made a motion and I'll second it.
Well, I said I would make that.
Oh, I see. One clarified.
Well, then I'll move item B, which is the, let's see, I guess the, which is, pardon me?
Stream.
Oh, that's.
Stream nitrogen removal system.
Oh, that's, I thought that was A.
No, it's B. In the agenda, it's B.
Oh, 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 item B on the agenda. Excuse me, I didn't connect it with that. Well, I'll certainly move item B on the agenda.
Second.
Motion a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, none.
Item C.
I'll be glad to move item C with the condition that the.
Contingent of?
Well, that it be, contingent of, that it be reviewed and vetted and approved by the Water Quality Management Committee.
Second.
Motion a second, approval with contingency of their approval at Thursday's meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, none. Next item is to declare a strip of land on Marshview Road, Davisville Road, East Valentine as surplus. Mr. Harper, you talk us through this a little bit as to.
Sure. It's a very.
That's the best option.
Sure, there's a very narrow strip of land on the edge of Marshview Land at the corner of Davisville Road. It's been used as part of that corner lot's property for the better part of several decades. In fact, the property owner believed it was their land, until they were preparing to dispose of the property for estate planning purposes. And then they learned that the, that parcel that was intended to be included as part of their lot was never recorded in accordance with the planning board vote, and you'll see a notation on there that says it's to be included as part of that lot. The property owner is now interested in having that property included in their parcel as intended, so they can sell the property as a whole.
Mr. Amen, do you want to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you very much for your record. I'm Bob Amen, and I represent the Feebo family, which owns the parcel that's on Davisville Road. They thought they owned this little strip, 1,800 square feet of land along the entrance to Marshview Road. But I think that Heather Harper explained the situation perfectly well. I think you are, I'll probably have seen a map of the property, so I think it's pretty self-evident. I appreciate the help of the town in resolving this.
I believe the process would be to declare the surplus and then sell it to the Feebos via a November town meeting.
via Newcombertown meeting. I think that's the only way we can technically deal with that. We could also do it up for auction, but that would be a process we'd have to go through. It's the first to collect surplus and then sell to the family. And for the amount, it would be equivalent to the taxes that were not paid, because it had never been registered.
Mr. Grant.
I just want to mention that, looking at the map, it seems evident to me that it's quite nearly impossible that anyone else would be interested in such a small piece of land that's virtually on the Mauvance property. So I think that the, you know, this is really a more expeditious process, and I would be in favor.
Well, when I, when I first looked at it, I thought it was fairly insignificant in terms of any value to anyone else. But then I thought, well, if it had extended to the corner, it might have been of value to the town if they had to widen the opening of the road. But it doesn't extend to the corner. So it really has no value at all. So I would make a motion to.
Declare by way of.
Yeah, declare, declare Cecil's parcel 401201A014 surplus.
A second. Okay, motion in a second. Make the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Thank you.
Next is accepted donation of Lucas CPR device from the Houlihan Foundation to the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department.
I have a couple of, just a couple of quick slides. The cops want to pay you guys. I'm Michael Smol, the active fire chief. These are the principals of the Houlihan Foundation. In 2001, Houlihan's lost their 20-year-old son, Matthew, to a sudden cardiac death. He was a student at Hamilton College in Upstate New York. And subject to his passing, they became principals and fund the Houlihan Foundation, which has raised a bunch of money and has given scholarships out over the years, and is also working to raise awareness for cardiac health. In the last few years, they donated some AEDs to the beaches in Falmouth.
Thanks, Matt and Peter.
That we've actually had opportunity to put to good use. They approached me a couple of months ago, were looking to make another donation. Are, we're in pretty good shape as far as AEDs go, so they came up with the idea to donate this particular machine, which is called a Lucas II. It's an external cardiac, provides chest compressions to victims of cardiac arrest. Okay. It's just a couple of slides, so you have an idea of what we're talking about here.
You might have to press it again, Peter.
You told me you were the AV guy.
That's it. Otherwise, it goes into cycle mode.
While we're waiting, I just want to say, what an incredibly beautiful way to remember your son in just very specific donations that really can save lives and that really mean the most to people when they're in distress and their lives are at risk. Very commendable.
Yeah, it's.
No pressure, Pete.
I can talk longer.
Try one more time, Pete, I think.
I think that.
Can you hear it?
It's power. It's flashing, just wait.
Oh.
You've got the top engineer. I mean, we.
So that was good.
No, it cycles through several times if it gets pressed more than once. Yes. It may, it may take some time.
Want to jump down to G?
Okay.
So what does this look like? I'm going to see if we ever get the sign.
Yeah, I've got a picture of it. I've got a picture of it, I've got a little bit of the science behind it.
Looks great. I'm looking at it right now.
So basically, it's manufactured by a company called Physio Control, which is a company that makes defibrillators, automatic defibrillators, manual defibrillators. Currently, the Fire Department in Falmouth, we have three of these devices. One of them is specifically manufactured by Physio Control. We have two slightly older devices that are called Autopulses, made by a different company. It's effectively the same machine, just a different manufacturer. We're leaning toward moving forward in the future. This Lucas is the company that we're going to go with. You know, I can tell you without the slide. So what, there was a good picture of it, but basically what it is, it's a device that provides external chest compressions to people in cardiac arrest. It runs on a battery, you don't have to feed it, it's never going to hurt its back. It provides, the science is becoming really overwhelming that out-of-hospital cardiac arrest survival rates are going up exponentially on folks that have this device applied to them. It does the chest compressions itself, a human being doesn't have to do it. After about two minutes, lots of studies have been done, after about two minutes, a person doing manual chest compressions, the effectiveness starts to drop off exponentially. That's why you see, why we send so many people to a cardiac arrest call. It's very, very, very labor-intensive. This machine maintains that 100 beats a minute recommended by the American Heart Association without interruption. Like I said, runs on a, it runs on a simple, on a rechargeable battery. By the acceptance of this donation, we'll have, we have five ambulances, they're in four stations. This will allow us to have one of these devices in all four of the fire stations that currently have an ambulance. There is some data on that, if we could get this, but the science is rapidly becoming the industry standard, not formally required in Massachusetts as of yet. I would speculate, in a couple of years, you're going to start seeing that these are going to be required, even on the ambulances. And it's about a $14,000 value, so.
And future costs associated with this?
I don't see, like I said, other than, other than routine upkeep. It's got a good, it's got a good three-year warranty. The one Lucas II that we have right now, we haven't had any issues with. Every piece of it is able to be cleaned and put back, so none of it's disposable, there's no reoccurring cost like that. I don't, I don't see any major issues with it.
And I also expect by the time we need to, if we do need to replace it, by that time we won't be in the law anyway that we have to have.
I would speculate, you can go to the next slide, Pete. I would speculate, you don't want to speculate, but I would think that in the near future, the science is really overwhelming. You know, there's another great picture somewhere, it's basically carried in a backpack.
What's the picture again, I think?
Yeah. That's it. So that's the whole thing. Like I said, this will allow us to have, this will allow us to have one of these devices in each of the stations having.
How much does it weigh?
I don't know. It's not too heavy, like I said, it folds up, there was a picture of it, it's basically the size of a backpack. In fact, it's stored in a little backpack-type device, but I don't know how much it weighs.
Sort of thing you could take out in the woods when, if they were.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. It's designed to be placed on the victim in the position where you find them.
Yeah, can you do defibrillation while this is actually?
Yes, you can. It has no issues, no issues with compatibility with defibrillation. The worst-case scenario is the battery goes dead and you take it off and go back to main.
Yeah. Because one of the things that in scouting they're starting to do is actually just say compressions only.
Right.
And not mouth-to-mouth resuscitation. So this essentially would give you that option again. And, you know, I think it's probably because of the communicable disease issue of doing mouth-to-mouth resuscitation with a stranger that you don't know. So this, this gives a person an option to basically protect themselves and do both parts of CPR.
Studies are showing that just chest compressions maintains enough end tidal CO2 movement.
Right.
It stays about 40, where it should be, basically on its own.
So just out of curiosity, you don't do breathing with, in addition to this?
We would, we do in the ambulance. The pre-hospital, pre-hospital CPR recommendations right now are basically, it's called hands-only. We still provide ventilation, but that ventilation is based on end tidal CO2 monitoring that we can do through an endotracheal tube. So we breathe a lot less for people, we give a lot less oxygen to people than we used to back in the day. It's been, the science is becoming really, really overwhelming that this is, this is the way to go. And another big thing is it's, you know, it does, it reduces back injuries, reduces fatigue in the firefighters that have to do, that have to do compressions. It's very, very labor-intensive.
Can we get five more for every beach house? Mr. Harper?
Conversation for another time.
On Harvard Beach, I just wanted to know, we've had 10 defibrillators donated to the town, and this couple here donated, I believe, four of them. So thank you very much.
I'm going to move to accept the donation.
Second.
With great gratitude. Motion second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the presentation.
Our next item is a petition for a temporary license related to rebuilding existing wall at 59 Monat Road. That's not a dock, but it's Shelley Isback.
It's not a dock.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, Michael Bosselli, Falmouth Engineering. And I represent the applicant, Charles Chevalier, who owns the property at 59 Monat Road. You may know the property. He recently acquired it. It's on the, adjacent to Bristol Beach, on the east side of Bristol Beach, just be, if you're heading east on Monat Road, Bristol's on your right. Just before you would get to the turn to go straight up Maravista Ave, there's an old white house sitting right on the, right on the beach. And then there's a series of houses, four, three or four east of that. Mr. Chevalier acquired the property with plans to improve conditions, and he hired us to do a survey as an initial step. And we discovered through our land surveying consultant that there's a small concrete block wall that is actually over the property line, onto the town land by about a foot. Clearly was intended to be part of this property. I can't explain how those things happened. I'm glad I wasn't involved when it happened, but the house is very old, so it probably happened at a time when we weren't so careful in measuring things, so. Conservation Commission has a policy that if you do any work on land other than your own adjacent work, or access through another law in any way, even something as de minimis as this, that you get permission from the property owner. In this case, the town's the property owner. So I had requested through Administrator Suso to be on the agenda in hopes that we could get a temporary license that would allow us to remove the old, it's falling down, I don't think you'd want to really own it. It's falling down, it's in a state of disrepair. We're hoping that you'll allow us to come in through Mr. Chevalier's property with a small excavator that's equipped with a thumb grab, that can grab and reach over and pull out all the concrete blocks that are on the town land. He would then rebuild a new wall, being careful to put it on his property, and then it would no longer be an encroachment. So that's why we're here tonight.
Well, there was an issue about a year ago that's very similar to this, that had great concerns of the neighbors, and I just want to make sure this isn't the same issue coming back again. I think it dealt, had to do with whether this wall was going to then go further down and block public access along the water from the public property.
You're referring to a property that's about five houses east.
Great.
Which is actually the extension of Maravista Ave.
Right, okay, thank you. Because I knew we had, a bunch of neighbors were concerned about that, and they had not had an opportunity to express their view on this, if that's the same one. Thank you for clarifying that.
So really, what we're doing is we're just authorizing them to do the work on town property, to remove what's on town property, place it back on the private property we're blessed with.
Absolutely.
Okay. But I'll make that motion.
Well, it's a short-term lease.
Yeah.
To use the town property for this purpose. I'll second it.
Any discussion, anyone want to speak on this?
Mr. Chairman, one comment. If this is so approved by the board, then the town council would prepare the temporary license agreement accordingly.
And I would encourage us to approve the request for license and authorize the town manager to sign that license, once the town council prepares it.
Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none.
Thank you.
Take care.
Now you're done.
Next is a request from the West Falmouth Library for a waiver of the building permit fee.
Hello, Charles McCaffrey. I'm Chair of the Building Committee at the West Falmouth Library. I have some glossy photographs. I could put up the big one.
Thank you.
The latest renderings of the project.
Thank you.
Oh, you only get, you don't get the glossy version.
Quite all right. Thank you.
I'll just briefly give you, I know most of you are familiar with our project, but just to bring you up to date, the project is, we initiated the plans for this project in 2013. It's a three-part, really a four-part project. We're restoring the original 1896 building according to preservation standards. We're rehabilitating a 72 addition, and we're adding an addition. And the primary purpose of the improvements are accessibility and safety. Currently, the library does not have easy access between its ground floor and the main floor. It's a pair of stairs that are very treacherous. So the addition will accommodate an elevator, a real staircase that's easy accessible, access at grade from the parking lot, four handicapped accessible bathrooms. There'll be a little additional program space since we're constructing this, but the primary purpose of the function of the program is to increase accessibility and safety. We're also doing an archive room, restore the original library. And as you can see from the rendering, we're adding outdoor space in what is a park-like atmosphere to the north of the library, which space will be able to become more functional. So the, we are raising, the estimated cost of the project is 2.9 million. We are raising that primarily from private funds. To date, we are a little over $2.2 million raised, of which eight, 1.8 million is from private donations from local residents. And we have about 300-plus thousand in two grants, one from CPC and one from the Mass Cultural Facilities. Our plans are being conservative, that we won't want, we don't want to start construction until we have raised 75% of the cost. And that's approximately 2.4 million. We're at two point, a little over 2.4 now, so we're almost there. So we want to, we think we'll be able to start construction in August. The architect and contractor are working on the final construction drawings, which should be ready within a couple of weeks, at which time we would apply for a building permit, because we're also anticipating that we'll make our target of 2.4 before construction's on. We have been, as I say, fortunate in the amount of money we've raised, but raising 2.9 million is still a challenge. And as we've been working with the contractor on keeping the prices in line with our original projection, we don't want to go over our 2.9. We've been working with our contractor and architect. And by the way, our contractor is Scanlon, who certainly has a good reputation with the town for coming in on budget and on time. We feel that we're trying to save money so that we can reach our goal and start construction. And the cost of a building permit for a project this size is substantial. Our contractor's estimated would be between $18,000 and $19,000. I think in asking for this, it's important to see the library as not just another good nonprofit doing work in the town, but we're providing a service that is generally considered to be a municipal service. We are a fully functional public library in all but the way we raise our money. And I think we know and we're grateful that the town recognizes that the library does provide a public, and what is generally would be a municipal service, by providing 19,000 towards our operating budget each year. And for that, we're very grateful. We also pay money for clams, so that anyone in town can use the library. Books come in and go out that may have been borrowed from another part of the town. I think for that reason, I think that waiving the building permit for the West Falmouth Library does not create for you a lot of precedent, since we are a unique type of nonprofit, in that we're primarily providing what is generally considered a municipal service. So we're very grateful for that, but we need to watch every penny and get this project underway, so that it can serve the town for the next 100 years, as it has for the past 120 years. for the next 100 years as it has for the past 120 years. We're planning to have, if all goes well, the groundbreaking on July 15th, which is the 120th anniversary of the dedication of the library in 1896, so we're.
Just to clarify what you just said about the building phase. Right now with the fam service, if a handicapped person wanted to get a book from Westfalmouth Library, it would be fairly challenging to be able to get it to get into the library.
We have a lift. It's an outdoor lift, it's very antiquated. You know, most people would prefer not to use it. So often, we, we can bring books out to people. We will be meeting with, to go over all of this with the, the Town Disability Commission at the meeting later this week. We have received other regulatory approvals. The only other approval we need is the actual building permit.
Just a point of order. I was, I should have said at the beginning, I was a little wowed and distracted by the glossy. That I want to disclose, I'm a former member of the Westfalmouth Library Board. I was a member before I was on the Board of Selectmen. And also that I have made a relatively small donation to the building. I just wanted to put that on the record.
Yes, I have a question about this 18 to 19,000 dollar estimated permitting fees. How much of that is the inspectional portion? And how much of this actual, the permits themselves?
I'm not sure. The contractor indicated what the percentage. I gather the fee is based on a percentage of the construction cost. So I don't know the exact breakdown of, of that. I was just told that that was the building permit fee.
Because I gather we're not really allowed to forgive the inspectional charges associated with, with, you know, basically giving you the occupancy permit or monitoring the construction as it goes along, so I didn't know.
That's correct. The, Mr. Patterson, the board's policy is that you can only waive the building permit fees, not the inspectional fees. So you're quite correct.
Do we have any idea whether that's included in this 18 to 19,000?
Well, we were not given a figure. It's the first time I'd heard it, I think.
Yeah, I just got it from the contractor.
If you chose to, you'd just be waiving the building fee. The building permit fee alone, in whatever amount that would be, and not the inspectional fee, and we would proceed.
Just calculate as a percentage of the value of the building.
Right, and we, we don't have, we're waiting that final figure. So it, it's going to be somewhere between 2.2 and 2.4 million. But when we have the final figures in the next couple of weeks, we would know what the total cost is. We're still trying to shave expenses from the project.
Any questions? Any comment from public?
Carmena Moc Muñoz de Luna, from Westfalmouth. I have been teaching yoga classes for Emerson House women across the street from the house at the Westfalmouth Library, without having to pay any rent to the library, just as a gentle gesture to the women of the house. And I think it's very generous, 14 or 15 years teaching those classes. My daughter Lucy, who went to Willough College, was the recipient of the Arthur Hennessy Scholarship. So another reason to be thankful about the library. But more than anything else is the feeling of being surrounded by people in the library who are extremely friendly and very knowledgeable about books and the things that happen in the town. When my grandchildren come in the summer, they go to the storytelling with Amy, the parades, the social events, the fact that many people in town consider that place a second house because they feel lonely and they go there and it's homey and welcoming. So I beg you to do what is in your hands to help out because every single thing you do will be very helpful. It's more than offering screens and TVs and phones. It's just having a book in your hands to increase your ability to use your imagination, which is nowadays priceless. So thank you very much.
Amy Sellers, Westfalmouth. Mrs. Flynn was one of my first bosses when I worked at high school. Took me a long time to call her Mary Pat. So congratulations. I've been working at the library for nine years now, and I do a program called Mother Goose on the Loose. It's free, it's drop-in, so it's wonderful for families of all economic and diverse areas here in Falmouth to come in with no pressure. We, I see over 50 families a week during the school year, and we reach a variety of them through visits to preschools. I go to the Westfalmouth preschool, I go to the Woods Hole preschool, and in the past, I've gone to Friendship Garden as well. It's a literacy program that's designed to help children with brain development and motor coordination and pre-literacy skills. It comes, I always ask people, how do you, how'd you hear about this program? And many of them say that they heard through the educators at the Falmouth Hospital maternity ward. They say it's a wonderful place for new moms who are looking to connect with other moms and/or dads. I have many dads that come as well. We reach people from Falmouth, Mashpee-born. I have people to drive from Plymouth and Yarmouth. We also in the past have reached the Emerson House women, many of them coming over with their babies and seeing other mothers' model behavior and really feeling welcome. I'm really proud of the program, and I think that the library has, I think it's been a win-win for the library and for the community. And we offer many programs to all different age children and multi-generational as well. And I think anything you can do to help us meet our goal would be wonderful. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Marcia Wetherby, and I live in Northfalmouth. I moved here in 2013. And the first social function I went to was for the library, the Westfalmouth Library. And a man came up to me and said, was very welcoming as everybody who was at that party was welcoming. And he said, he knew nobody, no one in town, when he first moved to Westfalmouth. And now his whole social life are with people who are connected with the library. I now understand what he was saying because a lot of my social life revolves around the library. On Wednesdays, they have a wonderful bridge group. There are at least 24 people who play, that's six tables, which is quite a turnout. Charlie was saying about the elevator, well, I play with a 90-year-old woman who lives here, and she won't take the elevator. So I have to kind of help her with my arm. And up the stairs, she uses a railing and then gets in for her bridge. But it is a problem, and the library just serves the community in so many ways. You've heard several, myself socially, the programs for the arts. They have local artists with paintings there for sale or just to look at. It's, it's just a very welcoming environment. And I hope you will do right by them tonight. Thank you.
Quick question. May I, quick question. What time is the bridge?
Bridge is nine o'clock in the morning. Nine thirty, nine, nine to twelve, uh, ten. It's regular Texas.
That was in the evening. I guess in full, I should also dispose that my wedding reception was in the Westfalmouth Library about 23 years ago. In case there's any concern about that. Any other questions, comments?
I move that we waive the permitting fees for the Westfalmouth Library for their renovation.
The building, but not inspectional, is that the way it works?
Building permit fee.
Just the building.
Just the building permit.
You can't waive the inspectional fees, unfortunately.
Motion?
Second.
Yeah, second, to waive the building permit fees. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Charlie.
You do have to add, it's Charlie's birthday today, so you're leaving him with a smile.
Happy birthday.
Next, on special events, we have a new event recommended. It's a parking for our wedding at the Monat Beach Lot on East End on Saturday, August 27th, 2016. Two details about that.
You know, it looks as though everybody's weighed in on this and feel like it can be managed, so I'll move approving.
Motion in a second. I do acknowledge that it's 40 cars for eight hours at 75 dollars. Pretty darn rate of parking rate. Motion in a second. Thank you for the discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Page two. We have a package of the BHNA scope of work. And those does include all the consideration of the Gus Canney site and the information associated with that. Does increase the cost in scope of work. Heather?
Yes, just a very quick comment. That is correct, the Gus Canney was added to that, and it's sort of spread throughout a variety of the different areas of the scope of services. What you do not have is what the final scope had in there. And that has the addition on the second page where it says confer with the town planner to assess community context. Several selectmen attended the Selectmen and Counselors Meeting on Friday morning, and Julie and I did as well. We were very impressed with the dialogue by the Cape Cod Commission staff. And we've included that they confer with the commission as well to discuss some of the overall regional planning goals for planning for the changing demographics of our community.
That's very beneficial.
I'll say.
So you're saying the alternative proposal will include, including commission?
Confer the commission, yes. We're still part of the line.
Mr. Patterson?
I was going to mention this during my Selectmen's report, but that meeting actually was quite helpful. And there, there were actually comments made by our own senior center directors, Joe Bishop, but also Judy Wilson from the Orland Senior Center. And I think what struck me about their description of the needs that they're trying to address is that 70% of the needs are really related to a kind of a human services support role. And we're thinking about putting human services offices and, and support services into the Marx Building. To me, this brings those two functions a lot closer together should it turn out that putting something on the Gus Canney site turns out to be reasonable and feasible for other reasons. But that really came through rather clearly to me. So I keep, and I've had this discussion with our town manager, that I think we need to think about co-locating human services with the senior population because the demographic data that was presented by Cape Cod Commission's Director, Paul Nidzwick, Nidzwick, excuse me, indicates that the population is becoming older and older. And so the demand for the human services is going to be more elderly people. And why not bring those two facilities closer together, one way or another? Either, you know, build a senior center with human services offices in it, right? Or bring the two locations in reasonable proximity. Because I am quite certain that if somebody were having a counseling session with somebody from the senior center, and they were advised to seek help from the human services, the, the challenges of getting transportation to a second site is probably going to weed out half the people from seeking those services. It's just human nature that, especially if you're frail or handicapped in some way. But transportation becomes more and more an issue for people who, who get older as they get older. So I, I just feel like, you know, adding the, the reconsideration of the siding at the Gus Canney Center, or at least in close proximity with human services resources, is really something that shouldn't be considered seriously. It's a, you know, the demographic shift is pretty remarkable. And just to highlight that, it turns out that the Barstool County is the fifth oldest county in the United States by demographic standpoint. That's, that's a pretty remarkable statistic that was shared with us. The median age for Barstool County is 52 now. And you look at the trends, and we're just going to keep on going that direction. Well, at the rate we're going, we probably will get there. Anyway, the demographics are pretty, what's a, pretty much I guess you'd say, something that we should be looking at seriously. And when you hear from the directors of two senior centers, the kind of services that they provide, I don't think we should be separating the human service support, you know, from a facility that also offers the social and recreational and, 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 you know, also, you know, the recreation, but I mean, the physical therapy types of activities.
Well, that's something that some committee can be looking at, but I'm just.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm, I'm supporting the idea that we should really look seriously at, at Gus Canney's site as well.
And it's important to point out that we're the only town on the Cape that has a human services department. Barstool used to have one, and they did away with it. And Mashpee had a person occasionally who worked there. But we're the only town that has a designated and staffed human services department.
Let's, let's stay focused on.
But it's, but there's a point in terms of the collaboration between the two is important. I mean, nobody else does it because they don't have it.
I also noticed that they have added the meeting with the Representatives of Recreation Committee as part of Barstool.
That's a good point. I'm going to move for approval of the proposal. Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it. Next item is the presentation for 300 Committee, the Shallow Pond Woodlands Project Land Purchase Update.
Just have to move a piece of paper.
Jessica, there's a piece of paper in the way on the, you know that?
Thank you.
Jessica, the votes on the first, on, on the, yeah.
This is not the right amount?
That's the one.
Okay. Use this one. Thank you. Hi, I'm Jessica Rittenhour, Administrator of the 300 Committee Land Trust. And our President, Tom Stone, is here in the audience, and Leonard Johnson on behalf of the Board of Directors. And this evening, we are here to talk about the upcoming acquisition of Shallow Pond Woodlands, which is on Thomas Landers Road. It is the largest undisturbed property left in Falmouth for preservation. And this gives you a sense in town of where it is. So it does have frontage on Shallow Pond. It backs up to, actually, I'm going to show you this one here. It backs up to the Briavogle Conservation Area. So the town leaf dump is essentially south of the Briavogle Conservation Area. The De Dario property, also known as Shallow Pond Woodlands, is the 69.7 acres that falls in between the Briavogle Conservation Area and the town-owned Wald and Fender Conservation Area. So it really is excellent linkage in terms of looking for connectivity of protected lands. Briavogle Conservation Area is town-owned, and Wald and Fender is also owned by the town. This particular property that we're looking at now, the De Dario property, would be purchased and owned by the 300 Committee. And we're proposing a conservation restriction that the town would purchase. So I'll just back up for a moment. Putting this in context of Falmouth, but also the Cape as a whole, we do work with the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts. And the 300 Committee has been a member of the Compact going back, I believe, almost 30 years. Leonard's the president of the Compact as well. But they have a vantage point of the entire Cape in terms of land preservation. And their director, when he found out we were purchasing this, did confirm the largest remaining parcel of undisturbed, undeveloped residential land on Cape Cod. So it's quite significant. and then given the location next to two existing conservation areas, it's a win-win in terms of connecting some really important land for environmental protection, but also for recreational purposes. These properties are used for passive recreation. There's an existing trail system at the back of Briavogle Conservation Area that could be extended to connect into this new Shallow Pond Woodlands property. So in terms of the Three Hundred Committee's review, every property that comes before the committee is reviewed for conservation value. We're looking for habitat, we're looking for water resource protection, we're looking for recreational opportunities. So we identify priorities based on what properties best meet the criteria. And over the past twenty years, this property has been quite high on the Three Hundred Committee's list. It was high on the list throughout the land bank era. Timing is everything in terms of when a property owner is ready to sell, and that's really why we're bringing this now, is that we have a deal that we were able to make with the Dedario Enterprises. But the conservation values were identified long ago in terms of drinking water supply protection. The state designates drinking water well recharge areas, so this property falls entirely within a state-designated zone too. So that means it helps protect Falmouth drinking water. It's the Mayor's Pond Well Site, but it's also within the Long Pond Watershed, and as we know, our primary drinking water supply. So it's significant in terms of drinking water protection. And then also for coastal resource protection, the Coastal Pond Overlay District, the property that we're looking at is within the Water Resource Protection Area for Great Pond. So the preservation of this piece would prevent any additional nitrogen that could end up in the coastal ponds if the site were to be developed. The property has wetlands, a nice freshwater pond, an undisturbed forest cover. A hike back into the property, you see majestic pines. It's really just a spectacular piece of land. And then, of course, the conservation value in terms of the linkage, the three properties combined is over a hundred and eighty-three acres that would be permanently protected. The acquisition itself, we would be buying the full sixty-nine point seven acre property. We were able to negotiate a one point four million dollar purchase price with a closing March thirty-first, 2017. So we have just under a year to put the one point four million dollars together. The plan is for the Three Hundred Committee to own and manage the property, as I said, and for a conservation restriction to be purchased and held by the Conservation Commission. This acquisition model has been used before. T-Ticket Park is an example. Also, Oyster Pond Environmental Trust purchased the Oyster Pond Headwaters property in this way. And the reason why we look at conservation restrictions in terms of town purchase of conservation restrictions is that it actually makes the project eligible for state grants. The state requires either the town buy the land, or the town buy a CR. You're acquiring an interest in the property. There's no other way for state grant funding, or for community preservation grant funding, to go towards acquisition. We could propose that the town own and manage the parcel, but in this case, the Three Hundred Committee and our stewardship program reviewed and said, yes, we are willing and capable of owning this. We want to take care of it, and we're prepared to do that. In terms of conservation restriction, it does require annual monitoring, so there is a responsibility in that. And the Conservation Commission has already reviewed and voted that they are comfortable doing that, purchasing the CR and holding it and having the responsibility of monitoring it. Just a couple more slides. I do wanna go over the acquisition financing. In order to raise the one point four million, we are requesting two hundred and fifty thousand from the Community Preservation Fund. That proposal was submitted and will be reviewed later this month. The CPC is having their first interview to discuss the project, and that would be in consideration for town meeting later this year. They have an emergency round of funding only. Because the closing date is in March, we would be eligible for the November town meeting this year. We're also looking for a four hundred thousand dollar Massachusetts land grant. This is a reimbursement grant, so we're asking Community Preservation to consider a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar proposal with four hundred thousand to be reimbursed. The way that this land grant program works is the Conservation Commission is the only eligible applicant, and they've already voted to apply. And the Board of Selectmen tonight, we're asking for your support in authorizing the town manager to submit that grant application. And the funding is only expended if the state awards a contract for the town in the amount of four hundred thousand. And the Three Hundred Committee is committed to raising seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars privately through our donor base and through local foundations. So that's the one point four million. The subject of the Community Preservation Grant that I mentioned and the land grant, those grant requests are for the town to purchase the CR. So the CR purchase really fits into and is an integral part of the overall land acquisition plan. So that is what the CPC would be reviewing and the state. There is a conservation restriction appraisal in progress now. That's a very important part of the process. We need to be able to demonstrate that the conservation restriction is worth at least eight hundred thousand in order for the town to be eligible for the four hundred thousand dollar grant. That's the way that the state formula works. So as I mentioned this evening, we hope that you'll provide general support for the project. And importantly, we need the vote to ensure that we can move forward in completing the land grant application and working with the town management to get that submitted. It is due in July, and it's in progress now, now that the Conservation Commission has voted. We're working with a consultant from the Compact of Cape Cod Conservation Trusts, and they have an excellent track record with state grant funding applications, and we've relied upon their grant writing skills for many years. But we're hoping to get that vote this evening so we can move forward with the rest of the process and submit that grant in July. Just a photo from one of the entrance points into the property. There's an existing trail system there now that certainly could be expanded and improved, but just a wonderful opportunity for recreation and environmental protection in the town. Be happy to entertain questions if there are any.
Thurl?
Yes. I can say I've actually walked through that far, so many, many years ago, on a scout trip. But, I mean, I think this is a great opportunity. Serendipitous that it suddenly became available and we can move forward on it, so.
Motion to support and authorize the town manager to...
Well, yes, that's the second piece, right? And so I, yes, I move that we authorize the town manager to submit an application for conservation restriction with the state.
The land grant request?
The land grant request. Thank you.
This'll be the fourth time we've used that four hundred thousand dollars.
Right. We're recycling that money. That's the way it works. That's the best way to do it.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those done? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you for your stewardship. It's a great asset.
I like that better than this.
Yes, I'm not sure what that is.
Next item, I think this is step three on the parking plan and batting cage for the Falmouth Youth Baseball League. And to approve the amendment to the MOU. Are you batting leadoff this closer?
I'm batting leadoff, yeah. Dispatch my bedtime.
Approximately two months ago, president of the Falmouth Baseball, Youth Baseball, had come to the selectmen with a plan for doing the upgrading the lot at Trotting Park Fields with some increased parking and they wanted to install some batting cages. And at that time, the, I believe the selectmen had said, come back and revise the plan and come back with a finalized plan that's approved through the Town Engineering Division and the Town Planner. So during that week, I actually met Mr. Hawkins. We come to our office and we had talked to him about the plan, finalizing the plan and bringing it to completion. And also how, I believe at that time, once the plan was to completion, they were gonna put an MOU together. So I met Mr. Hawkins and a site contractor, Carl Cavosa, on site several times to go over the plan, to look at the topography out there, what's gonna be done, what can be done. And so basically, it's, the town has a town seal on it, but this is actually a project going through the Falmouth Youth Baseball. So this is just real quick, this is an aerial site of that, shows the three ball fields. And the area that's being proposed for parking is this area right up in here, the grassed area up in there. And basically, if you were in the parking lot and you were looking up towards the site, this is, Google, Google is great, I do all this from my office. You can actually see it, you can look up through that. That's the area that they're talking with, the trees. And coming from Gifford Street, that's the Trotting Park Field sign right there, the youth baseball sign. That's one of the entrances, and up the street, there's the second entrance. So these, this is the area that we're talking about. So basically, what we're looking at is, this is a, this is a, the revised plan. It'll be, this'll be a no disturb zone, there'll still be a line of trees from Gifford Street back, that's approximately seventy-five, eighty feet. What it does is, from the parking lot up, we'll be using site grading all the way up to the top of the bank, and then the top of the bank, that'll basically be the limit of work. And we're able to do it all with site grading. So the previous plan had a wall, and I think the wall was four or five feet tall, and that can create some safety, you know, kids falling off. It just, it wasn't a, the best scenario. So what we're able to do is reduce the, remove the wall and put in this grading up here. The grading is one to five, so it's relatively flat, and the process and the theory behind it is, if it, when it rains out, the water's gonna come down that hill going towards the parking lot. And if, the flatter it is, the more it'll get absorbed, more time it'll have to get absorbed into the hill. So there's a ten-foot buffer strip at the edge of the parking lot, is right there, and the edge of the grading is right there. So there's a ten-foot buffer strip for the water to come down, create a little squail at the bottom, the water will stand there and be able to absorb into the ground before it gets up to the gravel parking lot. The batting cages will remain in the same area, same thing, they'll be ten feet behind it, and there's some area behind that, so the water can come down and be able to get into the ground before it reaches the parking lot. This batting cage right here, it will be, it's more flatter than the parking lot. The parking lot, we're doing five percent. Batting cages, you want relatively flat. We went across it with a half a percent, so it's a half a foot and a hundred feet. So that's like six inches, three inches, that's like three inches across the whole thing, it's pretty flat. And to be able to access it from the lower parking lot, we put in, we're gonna be looking at putting in some gravel steps, the gravel steps, granite steps, like the granite stones, just take them, flip them on the side. It's not steep, but it gives traction if people wanted to walk up to get from the lower parking lot to that batting cage. With the plan, also, there'll be nothing being done in the driveway entrance, there'll be nothing being done in this driveway entrance, we'll be just blending into the contours. And the main parking lot, that will remain the same. Over in this area, we're proposing just to put in three handicap accessible spaces, one van and two standard spaces. Basically, the concession stand and the restrooms are right here. So these places, these spaces are closest to that building. And then over in this corner at the very bottom, basically, the water starts from up here and it just runs across the parking lot in that kinda direction and runs to the lower, to the lower area. There's a lower parking lot down this area. So we're proposing a drainage basin at that lower area. So we were able to take the plan, revise it, remove the wall. I think that could save some considerable money on the project, and then the other minor adjustments with the basins and the striping of the parking lot and the grading and being able to grade that by, you know, relatively flat parking lot with a, with the surface that'll be, the parking lot will be gravel, so it'll be pervious, it'll be anything that gets on the parking lot will be able to absorb in. So that's basically where we are, working with Tom, met him out, actually, Tom and Carl met him out on the site last week, the end of last week, or the beginning of last week, knowing that this was coming up. So, you know, for the engineering division, we said we'd work with them as the project goes forward, just to do the monitoring of it and to see the limits of it, to make sure it's going through. But if there's any questions as far as the MOU or as far as the site, I think Tom will be able to answer.
I think what I described earlier, this would also preclude there ever being any parking on either the two entrances, and it was a possibility of putting signage up to make sure that that was gonna happen. I think that's what was discussed, wasn't it?
What was that, sir?
Parking on the two roads going in, making sure that we were trying to keep the roads clear from parking, the parking would be done in the lots instead of in the...
One thing that happens, Doug, is there, you know, there's not enough parking for the soccer fields in the back, the three fields here. So there are people that do pull off the edge of the road, almost all the way down Trotting Park, you know, and so this isn't going to stop that, but I think it's gonna help. We're not creating more people coming to the site, we're just trying to alleviate a parking issue. Right now, the existing batting cages are to the south, south of this. So we're gonna remove those batting cages, and that'll add additional parking there. So this additional parking, plus the additional parking where the existing batting cages are, will alleviate some of that, but it's probably not gonna fix it.
Okay. Carl, could you identify yourself as a public?
My name's Carl Cavosa. One more thing I wanna, the Road Race donated all the money to build these batting cages a little over two years ago, so this project's been going on. Peter actually stepped up and has really helped us push this along. He's been super.
Any questions?
I believe the top of, just looking at the package, the top of page five basically has, during the construction, that'll be all the items that will go with the MOU for during the construction. Based on that, the engineering department will oversee, will monitor it. Basically, the items that we had talked about, the spaces and the basin.
Mr. Patterson?
I move approval of the memorandum of understanding of May tenth, 2016, by between the town of Falmouth and Falmouth Youth Hockey concerning the use of...
Baseball.
Baseball, excuse me. Falmouth Youth Baseball League Incorporated, concerning the use of three baseball fields, the proposed batting cage and parking area, and the associated amenities located at five twenty-five Gifford Street.
Motion second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Come down Saturdays, it's a great place. It's fun. It's a little valuable.
Who's pitching?
Community, huge community atmosphere down there, and there's a lot of folks that walk on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is an update on the White's Landing Boat Grand Repairs. Mr. Fraser, doesn't look like we have anything to state here, although they were invited.
Greg Fraser, M.E.S. Director. Yes, unfortunately, we did get notification late this afternoon that neither Doug Cameron or Jack Shepherd would be able to attend tonight. I did wanna give you a quick update as to where we are with that project. All the permits for the fixed job basically have been obtained. What we're proposing to do is saw cut from essentially where the trailer stop is now, remove the lower section of the ramp, change the grading, increase the grading actually to allow for deeper use of the ramp. It was supposed to have originally been three feet at the deepest spot at Mean Low. Of course, that didn't happen because a benchmark was used improperly by the engineering firm hired by the state. That's why, you know, it's very important to emphasize, one, this is a state project, this is not a town project. The State Office of Fishing and Boating recognized the mistake, and up until two weeks ago, we were on the impression that this, we were on track to have this work done this spring. Now, apparently, there's... Now, apparently, there is some legal dispute between the insurance company for the engineering firm and the state, that they're trying to work out. But based on that, now the Office of Fishing and Boating believe that the work will be done in the fall, prior to the town going in and doing Phase Two, which is the road, redoing the road and putting in the sidewalk and creating the turning basin down at the end next to the ramp. I mean, there's still outside possibility that they'll resolve this in time to move forward, but we're getting to a point now that it would interfere with the primary voting season, and even though the ramp is not usable for some boats at low tides, it certainly is usable, and it probably would not be in our best interest to move forward if we got into any portion of June or July, August.
Ms. Rand?
Is there any signage posted so that folks know whether or not it might be a dangerous situation or an inadvisable use of ramps?
Yes, the state did put up some signs warning people that be careful at low tide, they're right on the ramp itself.
Thank you.
We have been in touch with our state representative, state senator, who are doing their best to push hard, but as Mr. Fraser said, pushing hard if it's not in the next week or so is not gonna serve us well.
So it's disappointing, this is going on for as long as it has been, but, you know, the state is moving forward with it, trying to resolve the legal issue, and we'll have to coordinate very closely with them, because they'll more than likely be in before the town moves to do the Chapter Ninety repairs of the road, which will probably be later. I think Peter's still, he's outside, he could talk about that a little bit. Ideally, I think the ramp would be repaired first, and then the town will come in and do the Phase Two.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just comment, I just wanna thank and commend Greg Fraser for his yeoman's work in making every reasonable effort to move this forward and avoid the, what appears to be the certain, almost near certainty now, that we'll have the second voting season when this ramp has been compromised. And that is, I wanna make it clear that that is not due to any failing and Greg's continued efforts to get this resolved. So we want to acknowledge and thank the state for the partnership that they have with us, and we look forward to this getting resolved, and regrettably, it appears it's gonna take two voting seasons to do so.
Thank you for the update. I wish we could put on something, but nothing we can do at this point. All right, our next item is to describe and discuss the grinder pump policy, and have an update on that, potentially vote on the policy. There has been a working group that has been meeting for the past two or three weeks, and we do have in front of us some things to consider as possible pump options. Mr. Suso, do you wanna talk about that, or should I read what the proposals or the items that we are in front of us to consider?
Happy to make a couple introductory comments, Mr. Chairman, if that's agreeable. As the board had requested, I convened a meeting of a grinder pump, a working group on behalf of the board, and we've met on two occasions, and we have some of the representatives that joined us here this evening, and I wanna publicly thank and acknowledge their participation, assistance, and working with us in that process. The one-page summary that you have in front of you is a product of those working group meetings, as well as, I should note, staff members joined us as well for that initiative. And I do wanna underscore that this is the basic framework that we're bringing forward to the Board of Selectmen for your consideration for a grinder pump policy. It does not deal with every minor or miniscule or significant or conceivable detail that may yet arise in the future, but it's an attempt to give you a blueprint, which I believe is consistent with what has been requested, and I would respectfully encourage the board to consider embracing this policy.
Conceptual approval at this point, and then a more formal policy to come once we've adopted.
Yeah, and I think what would come would be, you know, again, dealing with relatively significant details that might well vary from property to property. What you need is the blueprint, and this is brought to you in the spirit of providing that blueprint, which would affect all properties that are in the grinder pump area overall.
Ms. Rand?
I just wanna really commend the volunteers and, you know, everyone who worked with the town manager in terms of putting together all of these specifics that really have great vision in terms of anticipating issues. I, you know, I think I saw Howard come in and Joan, a whole bunch of people really, you know, cooperating and giving the board a lot of scenarios to think about, and it really gives us an opportunity to really listen to what the taxpayers need and the research that they've done. So I think it's a really comprehensive work and document, so I wanna just appreciate that.
So I guess I would like to at least read to the record server, get clear of what we're considering as our possibilities. We had already established that we were going to acquire the grinder pumps initially and transfer the ownership to the property owners, and knowing that it did include a five-year warranty, we anticipated these would last for fifteen to twenty years. The town did look into whether we could get a longer warranty, and we're never able to get really anything concrete about that possibility. So the four options are, one, that the town would provide modest compensation, a subsidy for the one-time partial reimbursement of a grinder pump installation cost, and that would be paid off by completed town inspection of both the grinder pump installation and the septic system abandonment. And second would be the town would conduct a procurement for an annual maintenance contract for grinder pump owners to include emergency pump outs during a temporary power outage. During grinder pump warranty years, this maintenance contract will be coordinated with existing warranty protections. Item two would be the annual maintenance contract would include a routine process for investigating and charging back to property owner in those circumstances in which abuse or improper use of the grinder pump is documented, because it must be an incentive to utilize the grinder pump properly and not to abuse misuse of this equipment. And the fourth is upon reaching the end of its useful service life, with no evidence of abuse or improper use, the grinder pump will be replaced by the town and continue to be owned by the property owner. Those are the four items that have been recommended by the administration and by the working group for us to consider. Any discussion?
No, I move that we adopt these policy options.
Anyone from the working group wants to add any thoughts? Some of the emails, every meeting back and forth have been fascinating, also on the option of tax abatement, I guess may be available. The tax credits that may be available to people who are required by the town to hook into this, and there's a very good chance that a lot of people are gonna be able to take advantage of that over the tax years that it is installed.
My second motion.
We have a motion second. Yeah, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, Joan Edo, Precinct Nine, I know what it's like, we'll make this brief. Thank you very much. I think that this is a good example, when we have a difference of opinion and we have different ideas, that we get together and sit around a table, and Mr. Suso, I thought, did an excellent job, we had two meetings, went very well, and we get something that makes everybody, everybody happy. So on behalf of the working group, I'd like to, hopefully on an affirmative vote, preclude that with a thank you very much, and to the administration that helped facilitate this process. And I also would like to speak tonight on, don't forget that this is the second step that this board did, and the very first step was consolidating the fees instead of five different, excuse me, consolidating the permits. Let's not forget that, that was our first step, we made one permit for this, and your board reduced the cost for the people with the grinder pumps permitting from two-hundred-and-fifty to fifty dollars. And again, so I think that's the second part of what this board has done, and both of them...
You were part of that initiative, excuse me for interrupting.
Thank you. But the only question I think I'll ask for Howard, and it was hard to hear, Mr. Chairman, but is there a clause in there for the emergency pump outs? Yeah, okay, we didn't, we figured it was there, but again, thank you, and I think the board should be commended, and it's easy to criticize, but I think if we all partake of the process, it works. Again, thank you.
We appreciate the thanks. I actually also wanna give credit to Ray Jack, because actually, the package we have here is very, very similar to what Ray came to the town manager and to me about two and a half months ago, with a lot of help from the working group to fine tune and get some questions answered, but really, it is, a lot of these things were things that Ray had thought about, said, you know, the town needs to take responsibility for them. So I wanna give credit to him also for suggesting a lot of these things. So we have a motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done. Anyways, have it.
Thank you.
Okay, next are some seasonal license renewals. This was an interim meeting, aren't we?
Yes, we are.
We are nearing it. First are in holders for the Captain Tom Lawrence House, 75 Locust Street.
Move approval.
Motion second to approve, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done. Second-hand dealers, Cape Cod Golden Silver, 424 Main Street in Falmouth, Cape Cod Pickerson Auction, 410 East Falmouth Highway, Dees Hom again, 93 East Falmouth Highway, Falmouth Service Center, Thrift Shop, 6111 Gifford Street, and Uncle Bill's Country Store, 412 North Falmouth Highway.
Move approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close done, anyways, have it. Individual selectmen's report. Ms. Rand?
I have a, kind of a big one, I just wanna really say I had a great time at the Fresh Pond Holy Ghost Feast, the Portuguese buffet was amazing, saw a lot of folks from the neighborhood, Jessica Whitnour, in fact, was there with her new baby. At the EDIC, the Assistant Town Manager and Town Manager attended with me, Slavon Patterson and Mary Pat, the ribbon cutting for the new solar field. A few of us were at the Affordable Housing Presentation at the library with respect to uses of CPC funds. Then on another day, the Woods Hole Women had their annual meeting, that was in Woods Hole, a great time had by all. The last thing I wanna mention is with regard to the 208 Plan, as the Falmouth member for the Water Protection Collaborative, I just wanna commend the Cape Cod Commission and the collaborative for earning the EPA Merit Award, and to mention that Barnstable County received nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for implementation with respect to the 208 Plan, and there's gonna be, around mid to late July 23rd or so, there's gonna be another meeting statewide for further progress in the implementation, so that's my report.
Anyone else?
One other event, on Thursday, I turned and attended the Community Preservation Act presentations sponsored by our committee on supportive affordable housing. Presentations were made by Shelley Gerring of Massachusetts Affordable Housing Authority, and also Laura Shufell from Massachusetts Housing Partnership, and it was a very interesting presentation that talked about how we as communities can support the further development of affordable housing in our communities, something we, I think we all know, we're at six percent of what Massachusetts recommends is a ten percent level, and that's sort of a minimum. But anyway, the presentations were quite enlightening, and I know a couple other selectmen were there as well, but helping us get a handle on this, and I noticed that the housing coordinator position was one of the things that they mentioned several times as a way that the town can help facilitate the production of affordable units in town. And I'll stop at that.
We actually have two proclamations. Ms. Rand, if you would read yours.
This is a proclamation honoring Rebecca Moffett, whereas Rebecca Moffett was elected to the Falmouth Board of Selectmen in 2013 and has served her full term, and by her own choice decided not to stand for election to a second term and is therefore retiring from the Board as of May 17th, 2016. And whereas Rebecca Moffett's service to the Town of Falmouth also includes two distinguished terms on the Falmouth School Committee, where she earned the trust and respect of her fellow board members and was chosen as their chair for her final term. And whereas Rebecca Moffett has completed a very successful and distinguished career as a teacher and educator in the public school system of the Commonwealth, and whereas Rebecca Moffett has served as an active longtime volunteer to the Neighborhood Falmouth Organization, which supports the daily needs of older residents of Falmouth, and whereas service to others is then a hallmark of Rebecca Moffett's character. And whereas during her time on the Board of Selectmen, Rebecca Moffett has provided thoughtful insights, guidance, and direction to the board as a whole, she has served as Board of Selectmen liaison to Beach Committee Council on Aging and has represented the town on the Cape Cod Water Protection Collaborative. And whereas Rebecca Moffett took her responsibility to act in her official capacity on behalf of the residents of the town, to the extent that she attended many, many neighborhood meetings and town events to learn what was of importance to the residents, and typically acted to provide time at selectmen's meetings for organizations coming before the town to speak at meetings so as to promote their events. Therefore, in recognition of her leadership and commitment to the Town of Falmouth, we thank her for her honorable service and wish her well on the occasion of her retirement, and witness whereof, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Mary Pat Flynn, and Samuel Patterson have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this sixteenth day of May 2016.
And I have a proclamation honoring Mary Pat Flynn. Whereas Mary Pat Flynn was elected to the Falmouth Board of Selectmen in 1993 and has served six full terms from 1993 through 2002, and from 2007 to May 16th, 2016. And whereas Pat Flynn has dedicated her life to service, serving earlier in her career as a registered nurse and hospital administrator, and whereas Pat Flynn served the community as the owner of the Village Pantry, a neighborhood convenience store in North Falmouth, and came to know her customers and employees, and became a valued and influential member of the community. And whereas Pat Flynn served as visionary chairman of Historic Highfield, Inc., and worked to fundraise and manage the construction of our treasured Highfield Hall and Grounds. And whereas Pat Flynn has been an active member of Democratic Town Committee and influential in electoral politics for local, state, and federal elections. And whereas Pat Flynn retired from the Town of Plymouth following a distinguished career, serving as personnel director for that municipality, bringing a strong professional management work ethic to the town. And whereas Pat Flynn served ten years in the Falmouth EDIC, which included service with a former mayor, Vostin, Mayor Collins. And whereas Pat Flynn has served as county commissioner for multiple successive terms, and presently is chairman of the Barnstable County Commissioners. And whereas Pat Flynn has served as a selectmen liaison to multiple town committees over many, many years, including but not limited to bikeways, Board of Health, Capitol Advisory, Coastal Spawns, Historical Commission, Human Services, Charter Review, and others. And whereas Pat Flynn has continued her service philosophy of meeting with the community where their needs are, she fulfilled this principle by attending thousands of community and neighborhood and special interest meetings, serving and influential roles to facilitate improvements with the Steamship Authority and the Barnstable County Fair and many others, and therefore, in recognition of her leadership and commitment to the Town of Falmouth, we thank her for her honorable service and wish her well on the occasion of her retirement. And witness whereof, we, Doug Jones, Susan Moran, Rebecca Moffett, and Samuel Patterson have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of Town of Falmouth to be affixed on this sixteenth day of May 2016.
What a night.
Amazing. We'll have a little cake and dessert after we finish our meeting, but we have, the town manager's report is our last item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple brief items, we've received a request from Mass dot contractor, P.A. Landers, to allow a two-plus week work extension, meaning past Memorial Day holiday, for the purpose of completing additional public safety-related improvements to the Jones Road Worcester Court Route 28 intersection, meaning that stop and shop area. For multiple reasons, this construction project has been unfortunately delayed. Ray Jack and Peter McConerty are recommending that this one-time request be granted in the interest of public safety. I agree with and support this recommendation, and I'm... and I'm asking for the board's approval during this report if you so concur, and then we would notify Mass dot accordingly.
Any discussion?
Okay.
Quite unfortunate, I do also know that I received a correspondence from someone concerning about some of the work that was done, and I know that the town manager was able to get some fairly quick response to that, and some corrective measures have been taken. But I would suggest we move a approval, allowing the two-plus week extension for this work. I'd rather have it done now than have to wait till...
Yeah, sure.
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I also want to give a, a brief update on the matter of the Uber Taxi Alternative Service. We've talked about that a little bit in the past, and Town Council's provided a recent update. The U.S. District, the U.S. District Court has ordered the City of Boston to report on the status of Boston's proposed ordinance to regulate Uber by the end of September of this year. I understand Boston's considering the abandonment of its taxi medallion system, which limits the number of taxis in the city. They're just merely considering that at this time. This would provide room, according to a town council, for Uber to operate in the City of Boston in competition with taxicabs. There is pending legislation as well. Before the legislature, if enacted, it will authorize the State Department of Public Utilities to promulgate regulations that will apply in all communities throughout the Commonwealth. And of course, Town Council's recommending that the Town of Falmouth should withhold any action pending the outcome of those two initiatives, and I certainly would so recommend as well. But that is a current status report, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. And last but not least, and quite bittersweet, I want to, as town manager, to thank Pat and Rebecca for the honor and privilege to work with you and serve you directly as town manager. And I wish you well in all things to come, and look forward to our paths continuing to cross. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
And I just want to remind everyone to vote tomorrow.
Yes.
I was thinking the same thing.
I think I'd like to just speak to each one of you and say, it isn't just Falmouth and school committee. I think about how many committees I've been on since I ever began my teaching career, and they're all a little bit different. And many of them, there's, our conversations get a little convoluted, but I think, in looking at each one of you, this is the best group that I have sat with and made decisions and voted. There's brilliance on this board. There's a concern for a town that you just, you just want to love every bit of it. And when it gets to the point that maybe it's not going the right direction, this board pulls it together. And I compliment each one of you for being Selectmen, and for our town manager and our assistant manager. I say thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Well, just to add on to that, I would have to say, too, that having been on the board for 18 years, that these last two years have really been the most remarkable in terms of people working together, people respecting each other, and, and just no personal agendas. It's really all about the town. And it's, I think it's a, I won't, I won't say it's rare, but it's, it's encouraging, and it's really nice. So I hope you continue that. I know you have two new members, so the dynamics will change for sure, but I hope you try and keep that same level of, you know, respect and calmness and all of that.
I appreciate it. It's the most productive thing for the town. We get to do more that way.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I might say, I, I hear the same thing from many people in the town who come up and make that comment. So it's nice to be seen that way.
Yes.
And I've really enjoyed working with both of you, and appreciate all the many hours you've put in on behalf of the citizens of Falmouth.
And there are committees you can volunteer for.
That's right.
Appointments are coming up in June.
I took an application for, just in case.
Motion second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it.